Up to you, perhaps. Stephanie Carey is almost on. I think I'd wait two minutes or so and she can join in.
If it's all right with members, we'll just wait a minute until Stephanie Carey is trying to join us. If she could let us know when she's on. She can't hear me yet.
Two one.
Good evening, everyone. I think we're going to start. Jeremy, have we got a following attendance?
Thank you very much, Chair. So in attendance this evening, we've got councillor David Bagshaw, councillor Ray Darby, councillor Lee Fletcher, councillor Jan Gould, councillor Richard Jackson, councillor Hannah Land, councillor Pat Lally, who's the chair, councillor Richard McCrae, councillor Josh Parker, councillor Roberts Thompson and councillor Tideswell. We have apologies tonight from councillor Barbara Carr and councillor Stephanie Carey will be joining the meeting very shortly. I've not been informed whether we have a substitute for councillor Carr. Councillor Radulovich, are you substituting for councillor Carr this evening?
Councillor Tim Hallam, as I understand, is substituting for Barbara Carr, but I may be an ex officio capacity.
Thank you very much, councillor Radulovich. So just to confirm, councillor Hallam is substituting for councillor Carr and councillor Radulovich is here as ex officio. We haven't been informed of any interests, Chair, unless any councillors tell us otherwise now.
Councillor Richard McCrae has mentioned something. I attend the VRU community meetings.
Sorry, I couldn't get my microphone to come on. It's councillor McCrae. I just wanted to clear an interest. I don't know what kind of interest it is. But for item six, I know it's only presentation, so we're probably not voting on anything, but I like to do that. Just to make people aware that I do attend their meetings, the community meetings, and I've been to their conferences as well.
Thank you very much. So that's a non-bacchanary interest.
That's it, that's all.
So, thank you. Back to you, Chair, for item three, which is the minutes.
Well, I'd like to propose the minutes as the previous meeting as to record.
I was taking that chair.
Thanks, Richard.
So shall I take the vote, Chair?
Please, if you would, Jeremy.
Councillor Bagshaw.
So can I just say someone's commented that they'd like to speak on the minutes in the chat bit.
Apologies. Back to you then, Chair.
Sorry, Trish, please.
Chair, through you, just in relation to the minutes, that was one of the meetings where I'm a bit like, I couldn't get on, but I was actually present for all of the meeting until it went into private session. Is there any way that we can register that I actually was there? And some of the voting, I think councillor Jackson voted on at the end on my behalf, but just at the moment I seem to be completely left off it.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we'll amend that accordingly, Chair. If nobody else has any comments, I'll take you through the votes.
Please.
So the minutes as amended to show councillor Roberts Thompson's attendance. Councillor David Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Ray Darby.
Four.
Councillor Fletcher.
Four.
Councillor Gould. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Land. Councillor Lally. Councillor McCrae. Councillor Parker. Councillor Parker. Come back to you, councillor Parker. Councillor Roberts Thompson.
Four.
Councillor Tideswell.
Four.
Councillor Hallam.
Four.
Let's just try councillor Parker again.
Four.
Thank you. That's carried, Chair.
Thanks, Jeremy. Right. Hello to all members, if we've not said it before. We'll move on to item four, neighbourhood policing inspector update. I'm hoping we've got Inspector Riley here to speak to us. Throw the floor out to him. Hello.
Good evening all. As usual, what I would propose to do, and thank you for inviting me first off, is just to talk you through the local police and priorities as they currently are and how we're currently performing against those priorities. And then a little bit of commentary around some of the other crime and disorder statistics on the borough. And then one or two other community issues, which I'm sure one or two are already aware of, and just to give you an update as to what we're doing about those. So starting with the local police and priorities, it's fair to say that anything that I'm going to talk about for the next few minutes is and has been severely impacted by coronavirus pandemic and a lot of the restrictions that we've obviously all been experiencing and been subject to since March. So first one, as always, and I've said this since the minute I took over Brockstow as Low Clare Commander, that the first priority will always be burglary of people's homes. As a crime, if you like, it's outside of anything that involves serious violence or sexual violence. For me, it is always the one that is the most impactful on members of the community. So burglary of people's homes will always be a priority. It still is. Second one down is antisocial behaviour. That will include vehicle-related ASP, including off-road motorbikes and the anti-social use of vehicles on the roads, and also cause of issues linked to ASPs such as drug dealing and youth violence. And there are a number of problem-solving plans in place for some of the areas on the borough. And as an example, ASP in Stapleford, which started off in the Hickins Lane area, but we now expanded to a wider area. And I'll talk to you a little bit when I've done the statistical analysis, if you like, about an operation we're going to be launching in the next week or so. Off-road motorcycling at Watnall is one of the priorities within that with a problem-solving plan. And vehicle ASP in the Newmanlis Tinley Road area, specifically involving car cruises at weekends. And the third priority that we're currently working towards is targeting prolific shoplifters. As with all, or the vast majority of crime types during lockdown, shoplifting obviously always ceased to exist. And since we went out of lockdown, it's exponentially increased. And the rationale behind tackling shoplifters is the same sort of volume criminals, if you like, who were spitting stuff out of shops, who were doing the vehicle crime, who were doing the shed burglaries, and involving a lot of the antisocial behaviour. So there's a lot of commonality, if you like, between priorities two and priorities three. So historically and through experience, and the easiest way to target the people that were suspected doing all these is through the shoplifting. Most shops these days have got CCTV. Most of the shop owners locally know who the recidivist offenders are, which makes it a little bit easier for us to target the people that might be hurting us in other crime types. So they're the current three priorities that we're working towards. Now, normally, as you're all aware, the local police and priority setting meeting process will normally include statistical data from the OPCC's survey and a number of other statistical type tools, if you like, that feed into how we make those decisions. The OPCC data wasn't available to us through the first quarter of the year. And again, that's down to the coronavirus pandemic and the way the OPCC gather that data. So these priorities have been set as a result of conversations between myself, my sergeants at Eastwood and Beeston, Maurice Hall, the chief communities officer, David Gelb, and it's based purely and simply on victim impact, local reporting and the incident data that we've got. I'm hoping that for the next quarter, the OPCC's survey data is available to us. And alongside that, we'll also set our own survey data now. So you may well have seen on some of the stuff on our website, the hashtag whatmatters. And that's a, if people click on that, they can click into an online survey and do a similar sort of thing. That data then feeds back into us at the local level to help feed our local priorities. So just looking at the priorities then, in terms of the statistical data, all crime over, and this is year-to-date figures, so from the beginning of April, so it ties in with the COVID period. But all crime is down by 20%, which equates to around about 658 fewer offences across the board. In terms of burglary, dwelling house burglaries are down by 31%, which equates to 34 fewer than this time last year. And burglary overall is down by 38%. Overall includes non-dwellings, businesses and community, places like community centres, schools, et cetera. So the overall reduction is 99 offences, 38%. Particularly pleasing in that as well is the business and community reduction. That's currently standing at 61%. And that's an area where previously, again, we've been not too hammered. And again, it comes down to the people that are involved in the petty tire crime are usually the ones that are breaking into the community centres and the shops, et cetera, in the dark, dead of the night to get whatever they can out of those premises. So that's particularly pleasing to see that. But burglary, again, in keeping with the force trend, is significantly reduced. I can't take all the credit for that. Coronavirus takes some of that, but it's fair to say we've been out of the main restrictions since June, beginning of July. So all of expected perhaps a little less of a reduction on that. So it's pleasing to see that we are making that headway on that particular offence type. Sticking with the priorities, shoplifting is down again, 21% on this time last year. And as I've alluded to, the reason why we had it as a priority was as soon as the shops opened, all the shoplifters, the regulars, were out there filling the pockets and causing an issue. So it is pleasing, notwithstanding that we've been on lockdown, that shoplifting is down like that. Drug offences is one of the few areas that is an increase, which I'm pleased about because if we're targeting people that are drug dealing, drug trafficking, drug producing, drug taking, then I want to see an increase because it means we're stopping more people and we're arresting more people. So the increase in drug offences overall is an increase of 59%. And in terms of the trafficking of drugs, that's 100% increase on this time last year, which is indicative of some of the successes we've had with warrants around cannabis grows and also some Class A seizures that we've had. A lot of which is linked to organised criminality in the borough. So that's pleasing to see. And then the final statistic on the priorities, and again, this has fuelled a lot of the work that we're doing in Eastwood and Stapleford at the minute. ASP has increased by 67% on this time last year, which is an increase of 660 offences. This isn't all local use, doing the usual ASP type stuff, off-road motorcycles, hanging around on street corners. Whilst we were recording COVID breaches during the lockdown, they were all recorded as antisocial behaviour offences. So that has fuelled that massive increase on there. And in the main, the vast majority of that increase is COVID-19 type reports, stroke offences, that we've had to record. But just as a breakdown for ASP across the borough, the two main hotspots are Eastwood North, and that's where we've got problem-solving plans focused on off-road motorcycling and Stapleford, both of which are around the 45, 48% mark in terms of an increase. And again, Stapleford is where we've already got problem-solving plans in place, and we're looking in the next couple of weeks to launch an operation called Operation Larkspur, which I'll talk about in a minute. Other crime areas that might be of interest to you, violence with injury is down by 21%. Robbery is down by 38%. That includes business and personal robberies. Vehicle offences are down by 42%, theft from a registered vehicle down by 56%, which again is really pleasing because it means we're targeting the right people with the shoplifting, you know, the low-level offenders are the ones that are likely to start breaking into your cars and taking stuff out to get the money for drugs, et cetera. Arson and criminal damage is down by 21%, which you would normally see an increase in arson and criminal damage with an increase in antisocial behaviour. So again, the the theory, if you like, or the fact that a lot of the antisocial behaviour has been fuelled by COVID is borne out by that. Which we would expect to see a corresponding increase with an increase in ASP. Domestic violence-type crime, domestic crimes, there's been a lot of coverage nationally about how lockdown would have an impact on that, and we expected reported offences to soar. I'm happy to say that on Brockstow, we've seen an increase of 2% across the borough for domestic crimes, which whilst it's never pleasing to see an increase, and it's never pleasing to see domestic crime on there, it is pleasing to see that that is actually probably not as high as the national averages on that. Disappointing is an increase in hate crime, particularly around race, which is showing an increase of 14 offences or 32%. And religion and faith is, we've got one more offence on that than this time last year, 32%. But again, the narrative around coronavirus, which we've seen published in the media and the Brexit-type stuff and the Black Lives Matter stuff, that's all affecting the national picture. I would have expected to see a similar sort of increase around the race hate crime thing. So that hasn't come as a surprise to me. It is a disappointment, but it's not a surprise based on, you know, the external factors that are likely to increase that sort of behaviour, that crime type. So that's a quick run through the crime statistics as we were at the minute. It's pleasing to see that the vast majority of those are reductions. I've explained, obviously, there is a significant impact on that by coronavirus. That's not to denigrate the amount of hard work that's being done by my teams at Eastwood and Beeston. And that's the response to the neighbourhood's teams and the CRD team. There's an awful lot of hard work going on at the minute by the teams who are facing an awful lot of unprecedented pressure. You know, I would like to think that nobody's lost sight of the fact that the issues that affect all of us around COVID and the worries and all the rest of it affect my teams as much as anybody else. They are human beings at the end of the day with their own families and their own vulnerabilities, yet they're going out there daily, day in, day out, and dealing with the people who don't want to do as they're told, and are doing it very well. So I'd just like to put that on record, really, the hard work that has gone on from the teams locally. So I mentioned Operation Larkspur, which is an operation we're about to launch in Stapleford. This will be specifically aimed at the whole gamut really of antisocial behaviour. We've had an increase in reports of people using off-road motorcycles, and councillor McCrae and I have obviously had quite a bit of dialogue about this. Off-road motorcycles, drug dealing, youth violence, some of it involving knives and blades. So we are within priority two, starting to look at prioritising around Stapleford. Centred mainly on the Hickins Road, Melbourne Road type area, but taken in wider areas, including a couple of the pubs, which I'll talk about the licence premises very, very shortly. So the whole idea of that is we'll be out on the ground as proactive as we can be. And that'll be a mixture of high-visibility patrols, some covert patrols, some more technical type stuff that we need to do. The use of dispersal orders around people hanging around on the streets and bidding for things like the Force knife crime team, who are excellent around covert proactive type targeting of offenders. I have managed to secure some, a little bit of funding to help us with that push with Operation Larkspur through the government's knife crime search funding, which is bannered under Operation Scorpion within the force. So I've got a little bit of funding from there, but I suppose this is where I put my begging bowl into my hand and hold it out and suggest to the committee that if there is anybody that's aware of any additional funding streams that we are able to tap into for that, or indeed any other crime or ASP issue on the borough, then please let me know. Drop me an email, give me a call, and I'll happily have a chat with you about that because, you know, the more that we can put into it, the greater the chance we've got of success in resolving the problems. So that's Operation Larkspur. What I would ask is, if it's all possible through your own social media channels, if you would mind not mentioning that just yet, because what I would like to do when we've got the operational order in place and we decide what we're going to do with it and when we're going to launch, I would like to do that through a media piece to our corporate communications, just for a bit of an impact drop. And perhaps get yourself involved, Richard, councillor McCrae, and then perhaps a little bit of comments around that as to how we're working in partnership around the issues that we've got in Stapleford, that would be useful. License premises then, just sticking with Stapleford very briefly, there's a couple of the licence premises there that have come to our notice in terms of volume of calls and the activity around them. One being the Admiral Sir John Ballas Warren, the Wetherspoons, and the Man of Iron at Stapleford. Happy to say that the licensees and the people involved in the running of those hostels are on board with us, supportive and, you know, do everything that we ask them to do. And it's not necessarily the pubs that are the issue at all. They are, become a bit of a focal point for people meeting. We've had some issues with people from Derbyshire coming in to meet some of the locals outside the Ballas, for instance. So this is all stuff that we're aware of. It'll all be encompassed into Larkspur around the high-visibility strategy that we've got. And hopefully using some of the technical options available to us to try and make a difference there. The main issue for us, and I'm sure some of the councillors from the north of the borough might have some comments on this, the main issue for us at the minute is in Kimberley and particularly centred around the Queen's Head on the main street there, which has got a late-night licence. I won't bore you with too many details on it. It's fair to say that if it was within my power at this moment in time, I would have shut that pub four weeks ago. However, we have been experiencing disorder in there. It does come down to drunkenness and the poor running of that establishment. The Police Licensing Department and Brockstow Borough Licensing Department are both working together, and obviously with me and my team as part of that as well. And we are seeking a review of the licence on that premises. The vagaries of licensing law, for us to make it a permanent closure, meaning that we've had to play the long game on it really. Rather than going with the Ad Social Behaviour Act closures, which would then require me to go to a court 48 hours later and justify what I've done with a very strong likelihood that the court would order the pub open. And once I've done that, I've then lost that as a power to me. So that's stayed in my back pocket for the time being. However, the licensing team have got a long-term, or a medium-term strategy, so we're saying to seek a review. That review request is going in this week. I would expect that a review hearing will be some time within the next month on that. And in the meantime, we're looking at trying to police any risk that comes out of it and the manner that we can do with what's available to us. So first, this last weekend, we insisted that the premises and the gate-in across the road, which is part of the issue is people coming out of the gate and then going to the Queen's late at night. Both of those premises had door staff on. And I put a 48-hour dispersal order on for Kimberley Town Centre. Managed to get some additional officers from the response teams in there to patrol that on Friday and Saturday night last week. That's the plan again for this week. So that dispersal order will be in place again for 48 hours from 10pm on Friday night. And I'll have additional officers up there for that period of time. Unfortunately, the door staff company provided for the Queen's have refused to provide this weekend because of the lack of COVID security in the premises. So there is zero social distancing in there, there's zero sanitation, which again through licensing, they are liaising with environmental health at Brockstow Borough. And we have looked towards the COVID legislation to see if we can get a quick closure on that based on the fact that they're not COVID compliant. We are reliably informed that the minute the powers have changed, we're not able to use that power to close it immediately. So they've been issued with an improvement notice last weekend and this week with a community protection warning. I suspect that come Monday, when the new coronavirus restrictions come into place and a lot of stuff is placed in law, that might give us a little bit more in the armoury to get that place closed before we go to review. But I have to sit with the experts in the licensing departments and play the long game to make sure we close it permanently and that that licensee is not allowed to pick up his licence or get another licence elsewhere. So I suppose the commentary on that and the plea really is just bear with us, please. We are policing as best we can, and we will get that place closed as soon as we can. Just very quickly then, a couple of other issues around licensing in pubs. The Cricketers at Beeston, that was closed in about April, May time, under COVID legislation around regular breaches, persistent breaches of COVID restrictions. That power was available to us then, and environmental health were straight in, and we closed the pub, and the licensee was evicted by the pub company. It stayed shut for a number of weeks. It reopened again recently, and last weekend we had disorder there. Three of my officers were assaulted, and there's now a plan in place through licensing to do what we need to do around the Cricketers, to prevent that becoming a problem again. I understand the licensee that's in there is moving to the Manvers at Radcliffe on Trent. So if it's an issue with the licensee again, then hopefully that has been resolved by that. But the Cricketers is once more on the radar. The final premises, the White Line at Beeston is currently closed and has been since the end of July. That's as a result of a stabbing that occurred in there. And the pub not complying with any of the terms of the licence around CCTV. The pub company then put in for a change for a change of the designated premises supervisor, which then gave licensing the power to go in and apply some new restrictions, new conditions to the licence, which were then flattered. So that gave us the power to close that pub straight away. And then the pub company decided to get rid of the new DPS and have kept it closed ever since.
Chair, sorry to interrupt. Inspector Riley, just before you say anything that perhaps is sensitive, just to remind you that this meeting is being streamed live. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that has stayed closed, and it's with the pub land, the pub licences, the pub owners, as to when that comes open. I've seen a little bit locally in social media as to when it's opening. I can't give an answer to that. Just a couple of other issues then. Knife crime, which is always a topic of discussion. The National Week of Action, Operation Scepter, is due to begin again 9th to 15th of November. As things stand at the minute, obviously if we get any further restrictions through coronavirus and anything changes to that, that is subject to change. But the proposal for that is knife amnesty bins in the same locations as would have been in March. So that's the Civic Centre at Foster Avenue and Eastwood Town Hall. So one in the north, one in the south of Borough, and also the Carnegie Centre at Stapleford. And again, as per last time, if there's any other locations that people think would be useful to have an amnesty bin, please let me know, and I'll feed that back in. We almost have to go through a bit of a risk assessment process to put them in there. But if you let me know now, then we can sell that ball rolling as soon as possible. We've recently had, just looking at violent crime, recently set up a forum, if you like, to look at youth violent crime, goes under the title of Operation Taffy, which is a force-wide initiative. Looking at serious youth violence and really sort of targeting young people that might be getting involved or on the verge of getting involved with violent crime and criminal child exploitation, usually around the supply of drugs. So we've currently got a little cohort of people that we're looking at with Taffy. That involves local authorities, social care, and looking at a real partnership approach to reducing the risk and managing the risk around these young people to prevent them spiralling into where we don't want them to go. And that's a piece of work that's ongoing. We're meeting monthly, and I'll keep you posted on that as we get any successes out of it. I have to say that one of the people that was on the cohort, excuse me, was arrested last night for an offence of violence, and they are currently still in custody. I obviously can't say anything more than that. Actually, it's an ongoing investigation, but plans are in place to try and turn these young people around and prevent them from spiralling into that lifestyle. Worth mentioning as well, we talked about robbery reduction. There was a robbery about three weeks ago up on High Road, quite a nasty one. As a result of an operation being run by the Forces robbery team, two individuals were arrested and have been charged with 21 offences each. Two individuals were arrested and have been charged with 21 offences each for a series of robberies and violence offences across the city of Conurbation, including Beeston. And today, further arrests have been made with regards to that from one of our local problem nominal, shall we say, which may well see a resolution to a community issue we've got in addressing Beeston as well. So hopefully that's all good news there. And then the final bit on my update is just a few updates on staff changes. Some of you may already be aware, some of you may not. Sergeant Andy Browning retires this month, my Eastwood sergeant. He had his last working day at the middle of last month, and I know certainly councillor Bagshaw came, it was very much appreciated that he did. David, thank you very much to Andy's leaving do. It's fair to say that Andy was a bit of a local legend at Eastwood, everybody knew him, everybody had time and respect for him. So again, if I can just place on record, my thanks for Andy's service and Andy's efforts up at Eastwood, I would be grateful. Andy's been retired by, sorry, Andy's been replaced now by Sergeant Ally Brian. Ally's been in place now for a couple of months. I'm sure some of you already met her, those of you who haven't, please make yourself known so she knows who she's talking about and who she's talking to. But I'm sure you'll get on famously with Ally, she's very good, and is a more than adequate replacement for Andy, so I'm pleased about that. Couple of other staffing changes, PC Becky Wilson has gone on maternity leave. She will be replaced by PC Matt Leisk from the 5th of October. PC Emily Hart, one of our Chilwell beat managers, she's moved on to our tactical support group at headquarters. And I'm currently trying to get her replacement in place at the minute, watch your space on that one. Two of the PCSOs from Eastwood, Neil Reddish and Zoe Dream, have joined the police as regular police officers. And from the 5th of October, we have an additional sergeant and five team under the banner of Operation Reacher coming to the Borough. They will be based at Beeston, but they will be involved in targeting a lot of the organised criminality and really giving us an extra string to the bow when it comes to targeting drug dealing and organised crime across the Borough. So that's the picture as it is at the minute. As always, I'm available for questions. I appreciate I've probably gone on a bit now, conscious of the fact that I missed the last meeting, probably even the last two meetings because of the coronavirus pandemic, so I felt it worthwhile giving you a proper update for this meeting. If anybody wants to get, if we've got time for questions now, then I'm happy to take them, Mr Chair. But if people want to give me a call or drop me an email with any questions, then I'm quite happy for you to do that, and I'll get back to you straight away. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon, that's a brilliant report, and we should all be very happy about reductions in crime. And thank you for all your hard work, and please pass that on to all your team as well, you're very dedicated to the area. I've got a couple of people who would like to ask questions, but I know you've actually addressed some of the questions already. But just Hannah, councillor Lamb?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for that report, it's really detailed, Inspector Riley. I've just got a question around the increase in antisocial behaviour, and you said it was related to Covid. I'm just interested to know, because you said that some of the usual kind of activities associated with antisocial behaviour didn't increase. So was it that related to the new laws that came into place around restrictions in Covid and specific behaviours related to that that then drove the increase?
Sorry, it's difficult for me to say that, in fact, I can't say that the traditional ASB didn't increase, because I haven't got that statistical data available to me. What I can say is, is traditional ASB type behaviour that will go hand in hand with ASB, such as criminal damage and petty arsons, that has reduced quite significantly. It is fair to say that, whenever we got a phone call from somebody saying so and so is breaching coronavirus regulations, my neighbour's got three people in the garden and they shouldn't have anybody, that was always recorded as an antisocial behaviour occurrence, which is why the figures are somewhat skewed on what they might normally have been in terms of that increase. Now, through the summer period, we would always expect to see an increase in antisocial behaviour, kids are off school, longer nights, warmer weather, so we would expect that. But we can put a significant amount of that increase down to Covid, but I can't tell you that the traditional ASB stuff hasn't increased, because we would expect to see that increase in the summer anyway.
Thank you.
Councillor Jackson, Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I mean, I have to say, when I received the agenda for this meeting, I was quite amazed that there was no global pandemic that we're in the middle of on our community safety agenda. So I'm grateful to Inspector Riley for his update, which touched on it quite a lot. There were one or two questions that come out of it. Particularly thinking about the future now, and obviously new legislation comes into place next week. And what if any sort of proactive plans have you got in place? Because you mentioned some licence premises, and I think a lot of us have seen examples of that practice from various places, and I recognise some of the names that you went through. You've obviously, I wouldn't ask you to tell us where you're going and when, but, you know, have you got the resources and have you got plans in place to tackle the worst offending places first, once the legislation's in place that lets you do that? You talked about race crime, which is concerning to hear there's an increase. And there was anecdotal evidence, certainly stories in the, in social media and in local media about, I suppose, Covid related race crime, particularly around the Chinese community, probably not university students, being targeted very early on and blamed for Covid-19, so I don't know whether that's included within that. And obviously with universities coming back, is that something that's on your kind of watch list for something we're concerned about in the future? And just finally, you talked about, I'm sorry, I didn't manage to write, well, I did write it, I can't actually read my own writing. There was an operation you were talking about that's coming up in the next few days, which you've asked us not to talk about on social media, which I'm sure we'll all respect that. Is there something that you can share when you want to publicise it on social media? Is there something on that that you can share with us as members that we can then put out on social media after you've done so efficiently?
On the last point, absolutely. Once I've spoken to media and we've got everything lined up, and I've got that media piece ready to go, then I will share that with all of you through the usual newsletter type process via email. And, you know, you'll get a copy of the news release or the press release that goes out. And then absolutely, once that's out, please share away, because we want people to know that that's what we're doing. We are operating in those areas and we are targeting the issues that people are telling us. This is affecting our quality of life, and targeting the people that we really want to see locked up. So that's absolutely not a problem. In terms of the new coronavirus legislation, that's a piece that's still being worked on. Obviously, the PM only made his announcement yesterday, the legislation becomes law on Monday. There will be some guidance comes out, no doubt, from our centre, from our command team, goal group meeting tomorrow. So I would expect that there'd be some guidance come out of that over the weekend as to how we're expected to deal with any breaches of the new law. I will suggest that the emphasis would be very firmly still on the four E's that we've employed since the beginning of lockdown. And that's that we engage with people, we explain the law and why we're wanting people to do what we want them to do. We encourage them to comply with the law, and then only, and only when they refuse to comply with the law, we will then enforce. There will be more powers available to us. There's still, I understand it, won't be the power for us to enforce social distancing per se. And I know there's been a lot of talk since the PM's announcement yesterday around marshals that are going to be put into town centres and high population areas to enforce, if you like, social distancing. That's a power that's never been available to the police in England since the beginning of March, although it is in Wales and Scotland, I can't quite wear that one out myself. But the guidance that we will follow, I would suggest, National Police Chief's Council guidance, that's what we've done from the outset. So I can't really say anything more than that, Richard, to be fair, until I know a little bit more myself. But I would suggest we will still be looking at, this is a community policing type operation, this is community policing ethos, and it could be around the four E's. And then in terms of, I think the first part of your question was around proactive activity that we've got lined up to sort out some of the problem children on the Borough. Very definitely, in terms of the licensing issues in the north of the Borough at Kimberley, there is a plan in place to try and get that resolved and resolve longer term, and so that I'm not having to throw extra police resources into it on a Friday or Saturday night and put in something which is still a relatively strict infringement of people's liberties, really, with a dispersal order. You know, section 34 dispersal order gives power to tell anybody within that area, you leave the area and you don't come back for 48 hours. So that's not something that I do lightly, but I'm quite prepared to do that every weekend until we get that final piece in the jigsaw to get that problem resolved. And the proactive stuff around Stapleford, that'll tie in with Operation Larkspur to bring it back full circle. I'm considering a number of proactive initiatives on that, both high visibility and more covert, with hopefully some tactical assistance as well, technical assistance, I should say. So yes, my, I mean, although you know me now, I am very proactive by nature. I will soon tackle a problem from the off and wait till it builds up. Sometimes we need to let things build up so we've got the evidence base to be able to tackle it. But my view is, we're getting there quick and we're sorted quick.
Pat, if I could just come back very quickly, I mean, thank you for that, really appreciate that. All I would say is, as local councillors, we're all here to back you up, because we support what you're doing. And actually, I think we probably all support the approach, we don't want to see people prosecuted, we don't want to see bad behaviour stopped. And if you can do it without prosecution, brilliant. If I think back to last weekend and closures of pubs, this isn't you, this was obviously voluntary, but closures of pubs in Watford and Kimberley, local members didn't know anything about it. So we're probably the first port of call, because they can't get hold of anybody else. So if you can, you know, after the event, just let people know what's happened, because we will back you up and will support you with local community and local neighbours with concerns.
Yep. So I've got on my pad.
Thanks, Richard, that was very constructive. Councillor Bagshaw, David?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm going to be quite quick now, because this seems to be going on forever. We have a new sergeant inspector, thanks very much indeed, she's a local girl, which is nice to know. But I've just got a FS report on crime, and apparently Eastwood North comprises of Orsworth, Brinsley, Greasley, Newthorpe and Gilrock. Is that a new area that you've created?
Not since I've arrived, David, to be fair. Eastwood North, Eastwood South, Eastwood, Beeston, Stapleford, Chilwell are the six neighbourhoods that we work towards. So those parameters have been set in place since before I arrived.
Well, they actually haven't, and I've asked Andy many times to extrapolate Eastwood, and he's never managed to do that. And I think we have people within the force that can do that, when I was there, they could manage that. But I'll go and see Ally myself and talk to that. Reported this week about a motorbike going round Hall Park. Surely to God, we've got enough cars in Eastwood for somebody to pop in a car and drive down to Eastwood Hall, which is half a mile away max, and get it sorted out. It never seems to happen. I reported it to Control Room, so they would keep a record of it. So I don't know what really happened of that, that'd be nice to know that we can have some quick response to these requests.
Have you got an incident number for that?
She never gave me an incident number, but I did give her my name, which she asked, would you mind? I said, no, here I am. So, but no, she didn't give me an incident number. And last off, we like to see numbers rather than percentages, because our shoplifting, some of our shoplifting has only increased by six, but that gives you 200%, which is really false indication. The one good thing that I'm going to be able to tell you now and support is that on our agenda, on item 10, it does say that it was noted that knife crime had deceased in the Nottinghamshire area. So congratulations to you, it seems that knife crime has been buried, so we've solved that for you, thanks very much.
No, thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you, David, let's hope that's true, or not just a typo. Could I ask councillor Taj or Colin?
Yeah, hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Colin. Can I ask members, we're not here to discuss individual incidents, just generalities please. Simon is available outside of the meeting for individual incidents. Colin, Colin, can you speak on? I'm going to come back to Colin in a minute. Councillor Hallam, Tim?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for coming, Simon. Just, you mentioned Black Lives Matter earlier, and that there might have been responses, reactions to that, which is obviously, I'm sure we can all appreciate, quite understandable. Have you experienced any increased animosity locally between yourself as the police force and certain ethnic groups? And so how are you tackling that and making sure that those relationships don't break down?
Absolutely none, imperfect, honestly. We've had no direct animosity towards us at Brockstow. There was obviously a bit of a demonstration with a number of groups of opposing viewpoints in the city centre two or three weeks ago, where that may have been the case. But certainly in terms of Brockstow, there's nothing come across my desk, into my inbox, into my attention that suggests that my teams are being targeted, or there's anything in any way that we are being viewed more negatively as a result of what we've been reading about in the media for the last few months.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for that. Could I invite Colin back in again? Colin, I'll give you a moment to unmute him. Colin?
Yes. I like to say to Inspector Riley, thanks for the hard work that all your team have been doing. Unfortunately, we have had problems with knife crime over the, about two, three weeks ago, two incidences. We've also had problems for the last four years with ASP problems. Even we've had problems with behaviour problems for the last four years. It's not just indicative of the problems that we have been facing. So I know for a fact that it has, the problems on the Inumnot Recreation Ground have been going on for four years now. And it always has been problematic around this time of the year, unfortunately. So we were hoping that it would improve, but unfortunately it has not. So it is quite an annoying factor. So we know that the CCTV has been taken down again because of problems that have been experienced again. We hope that there will be some future improvements in CCTV. I know the expenditure has supposedly been increased a trouble where, so let's hope that the matters will get better. But I do appreciate the amount of policing hours that's been put in, which has been quite phenomenal actually, because of the knife crime and other problematics as well. But thank you, Chair. Thank you, Inspector Riley, for the good work that you people have been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling, I think you need to communicate with David Gell and see that everything that can be done is being done to address those issues. Inspector, thank you ever so much for coming along, it's been really informative and useful. It's been really informative and useful and positive as well. So keep up the good work and please keep continuing to work in partnership with us.
Thank you, will do.
Thanks for that, members, we'll move along. Next, I've got an update on the Police and Crown Commissioner Panel. Richard, I don't know whether you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I was just turning my camera and everything off, hope you can all hear me. I'll keep it brief as well because I think a lot of this stuff's been covered by the inspector, so thanks for that. So the last meeting of the Nottinghamshire Police and Crime Panel took place online on 11th September.
Thanks so much, sorry to kill yourself.
No, it's no problem, to be fair. Someone's left them on.
Could I just ask for all people to mute, Inspector Riley?
Yeah, so, okay. The last meeting of the Nottinghamshire Police and Crime Panel took place online on 11th September. This can be viewed on the Nottinghamshire County Council YouTube channel if anyone would like to view it. And I'd also like to ask if a link to that can be posted in the minutes, so if anyone does want to view it. We were given a domestic violence update, the Police and Crime Commissioners' update and the National and Regional Developments' update by the Police and Crime Commissioner, Paddy Tippin. And again, these are all available online. And I'd also like to request links to be put in the minutes and if anyone wants to read them, they can. And in the meantime, you can find them on the county website and I think the Police and Crime Commissioner shares them as well. We also received an update of the Home Office review into the role of the Police and Crime Commissioners. Again, that was by the Police Commissioner. Then we moved on to the Police and Crime Commissioners' annual report. And I've requested copies be sent to all councils, including us, and also to schools as they can add them on to emails which they send out to parents and carers and whatnot. And I've also requested the hard copies be sent to libraries once the final draft's been sorted out. They've got to change my photo in it because I don't like the photos in it and some other bits. It is also important that we encourage people to call 999101 or use Crime Stoppers to report crime and not just keep posting on social media. The police can action areas to be looked into, but only if people keep making them aware. This is something I would like to see us as a council encouraging people to do. And I'm sure our excellent comms team would be able to put something together and post on our social media channels. I just think that would help. And I've just tagged on the bottom here, I'm also very concerned about the amount of nitrous oxide canisters we keep finding. Outlets picking today in Stapleford, we found over 50 at two different locations. One was behind Sainsbury's in Stapleford and the other one was Archesfield Park. And again, it would be good if the council could use our social media channels to promote the dangers of using such items. I know other people have done that. And then as always, if anyone has any questions that would like me to take to the Police and Crime Panel and get in touch, you can either send me an email or just give me a call for a chat. I'm your guys' representative there, so if you want me to bring anything up, give me a shout and I'm more than happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that, Richard. I'm sure David Gill is taking note of any communications that we could make through the council communication channels, but members as well. I know that's an issue at the minute that people moan on Facebook and whatever. And when asked whether they've actually reported it, they say, well, no. So please do encourage, we need to keep statistics up to date, just to inform us where to put our resources. Any members want, I've got no indication, remaining members about questions, so it's all right, I shall move on to the next item. Item six, presentation on the Nottinghamshire VRU Violence Reduction Unit, David Weyklin. Are you there?
Yes, Chair, thank you, good evening. I think Dave Gill's going to share his screen for me, thank you.
Could you put your camera on, please, David?
Yes, forgive me. Thank you very much, is that okay? Right, thank you. Is that everything, is that okay, loud and clear?
The presentation is live, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. So yeah, good evening everyone, my name's Dave Weyklin, I'm Director at Gedlinborough Council for two and a half days a week and for the other two and a half days a week, I manage the city and countywide Violence Reduction Unit. And I've been asked by Ruth and David Gill to come and speak to you this evening on the setup we have across Nottinghamshire City and the county in relation to the work of the Violence Reduction Unit. And my plan is to speak for about 15 minutes, if that's okay, and pick out some of the main issues from the slides that I've got and then open up for questions. So it's really helpful for me to be with you. I've not had the chance to speak to your committee before. I work very closely with David Gill and Ruth and the Community Safety Partnership, so you'll know all about that. Ruth chairs the South Nottinghamshire CSP and I chair the Operational Delivery Group, so regularly speak to the three area inspectors we have in Rushcliffe, Brockstow and Gedlin and indeed the directors and heads of service like David and colleagues. So I present today on the work of the Violence Reduction Unit. And if I can move through, David, to the purpose of the VRU. What happened in 2018 and 19 was that across the country, there was an exponential rise in serious violence, particularly weapon-enabled and knife crime violence. And that really came to a head with a number of murders of young people across the country. And you'll be familiar with some of those, having seen the media reports nationally. And it came to a point in 2019 where the Home Office, I think, accepted that they need to do something fundamentally different regarding how knife crime is tackled. And they established in May of 2019, the Violence Reduction Units, and there are 18. If you could just move the slides on, David, to the slide that said of the purpose of the VRU, thank you. So they determined 18 Violence Reduction Unit areas across the country. And they were determined by the levels of serious youth violence and injuries that went into accident and emergency at trauma centres. So for Nottinghamshire, that's the QMC. And when the Home Office Research Unit looked at the areas where serious violence was at the highest, the top 18 areas were chosen and Nottinghamshire was one of those. But broadly of the 18, we were in the lower third. So we qualified because of that for £880,000 worth of funding last year. And indeed, it was carried forward on a one-year-only basis for this year. There is some work going on now through the preparations for the Comprehensive Spending Review that officials at the Home Office are working on to extend the work of the VRU, but we won't know anything about that till the CSR in a few months' time. But the Violence Reduction Unit's task was, and our task, which I'm involved in now on a weekly basis, is to look at serious violence and really look at the causes of it. So you heard from Simon, who I know very well, I used to work with him, you heard much about the manifestations of serious violence, what's happening when, where, who's involved, what exactly is happening. But what is often lacking from the conversation is why is it happening? And why are men and women involved in serious violence? And that's the quest of the VRU, to provide leadership, coordination and insight into delving down into the causes of serious violence across the spectrum of ages. And what I mean by that is looking at violence, how it manifests itself in young people. And at the other end of the scale, as you move through adulthood, looking at how violence carries on into adulthood and what we can do about it at every point in between. We have to massively involve the public in that. And just at the bottom of this slide, and I'll talk about it in a moment, engaging with the public and having really meaningful dialogue with sections of the community is really important. So just moving forward, David, if I had the slides, I'll take questions on at the end or indeed after this meeting. And David and your chief executive, I've got my contact details, I'll happily have a conversation with any of you after the meeting itself. But our work within the VRU is through what in public health is called a public health lens. So looking at the life course of a person, looking at opportunities to intervene and make substantial change at various points in the life course. So now we're looking at things like exclusion, those that aren't in education, training or employment. We're looking at effectiveness of the criminal justice system around violence. We're looking at the causes of domestic violence. And at the other end of the scale, looking at what effectively needs to be in place of those that are released from prison, having served sentences for violence. So we're looking across the range. The next slide just shows in blue how what we do fits into the structure. And it might be a little bit difficult to see on screen, but broadly, the sections in blue down the centre place the VRU's work at the centre of the problem-solving partnership work that David and Ruth and myself and others, Simon and others on the call that participate in community safety work. It puts our work right in the centre. So our board is chaired by the Police and Crime Commissioner. We have a very really keen and interesting group of senior people on the board. We have a stakeholder reference group, which some of your officer colleagues from Brockstow come to. And we have a community listening panel. And then a range of work streams, and they're the boxes in orange on the chart, around data, evidence about what works for prevention, analytical pieces of work, looking at causes, looking at how at a population level, we can get messages out around violence prevention and what we can change in terms of the way organisations work to make them work in a more smarter way to prevent serious violence occurring in the first place. And all of those things I've said are all new. Nothing that we're doing is in any way replicating anything that currently exists, either at this city, county or district and borough level. And being involved and embedded in that work for so long, I can make sure, as its director, that we are not duplicating and that we're only adding value. The next slide, I'm just going to talk very quickly through, it's just the structure. Out of the £880,000, I've put together with the support of the board and the Police and Crime Commissioner, a very small lean team of mostly part-time staff. As I said earlier, I'm two and a half days a week. Most of my team are the only people that are full-time, are the project manager and the project coordinator. It's a team of specialists in public health, in research, in analytics and in children's services. In terms of progress to date, you know, we started properly delivering in June last year. It's just on the next slide, please, David, thank you. We've commissioned a number of pieces of research and commissioned a number of services that weren't being provided, that we felt through the early looking at the evidence, we needed to put in place. And that funding has resulted in a number of projects and initiatives that are taking place in the city, in the county and across the district and boroughs. So for example, you know, you heard from Simon, Inspector Riley, how busy his officers have been carrying out their policing operations, bringing people into custody. One of the things that we saw as a gap was that for the peak offending age for young adults, which is between 18 and 25, those in police custody weren't being given the opportunity, bearing in mind all of them are preceded, again, some are, you know, kept in custody for a few hours and then released under investigation. We wanted to get an intervention in at that point because the time spent in a police cell for some is quite a teachable moment. It's an opportunity to put an intervention in, whether that's around substance misuse, alcohol, homelessness, a work, a training opportunity. The evidence suggests that when people are in places like hospitals and cells, in prison custody, police and prison custody, that's a key opportunity to intervene. So we funded, for example, some work around that. And as a bit more about the projects to come before I finish. In terms of performance, one of the things that Simon alluded to was that since we started work in May and June last year, supported by a lot of extra police activity, which a number of members have mentioned, that the VRU, I think, have added some real value to that. So you'll see at the bottom of this slide, that in the performance year that Simon was just describing, which doesn't include the Covid period, you know, knife crime offences in Nottinghamshire were down and there's a figure there of 92 offences. And these are all serious offences, which was 10 and a half percent. And then if you look at the averages in the bottom sentence, we've performed far better as a county, and you are a part of that county, than the most similar force average and the regional average. So knife crime is certainly, it's not beaten by a long measure, but last year to the end of April was particularly positive. And I'd like to congratulate please and council colleagues and indeed the community for coming forward and helping to make that possible. The next slide describes some of the key points that through our analysis in the first year, starting to understand the causes of serious violence, we've got a number of emerging themes. And it's the follow-on slide, David, please. Thank you. And I won't have the time to go into all of these, but what we're starting to get an understanding of, and the strategic assessment is on our website, which is very easy to find in terms of Google searches, et cetera, we've identified a number of key themes that start to articulate the causes of violence. And what we're doing as a group of 18 Violence Reduction Units is comparing our notes. Every couple of months, get involved in discussions with the Home Office and are building up an understanding nationally of the drivers of serious violence in Nottinghamshire and indeed across the UK. And there are some of the things within that slide there, I can take questions on any of those towards the end of the presentation. But we have a number of merging lines of inquiry, so to speak, that we're investigating as we're moving to year two and researching and providing funding to look into some of those points on that slide. If I could just move two slides forward, David, on to recommendations within our response plan. So from the strategic assessment, it's, thank you, it's the next slide. From the strategic assessment, we've identified a number of key priorities and those priorities, I'll just pick out a couple of things from each one. So there's a clear priority about the need for information and data to drive the quest for good evidence and the quest for targeting our resources. And Simon said that, you need good data analysis to drive operations. Well, it's just the same for targeting interventions, good data and analysis and merging data sets. So things like looking at police data for assaults on the street, where do the police record incidents, where are ambulances picking people up that are injured, et cetera. Those data sets don't naturally come together, you have to bring them together. And that's the sort of work that the VRU are doing, which is then going back out to community safety partnerships. So in relation to the first priority, you know, perhaps one I'd point out is the bottom one, which is understanding what works in terms of preventing predominantly men committing domestic violence. So we're looking at a programme of work for those men predominantly in the system that are repeatedly committing violence. So what works in terms of their offending behaviour, you know, what's the best intervention to put in? There's not a lot of evidence on effectiveness of that in the UK. And we're doing some work with Nottingham University to determine from international evidence what should go into a Nottingham perpetrator Programme, which we're looking to fund. So what things should go into an offender management project to drive down domestic violence? On the following slide, David, we'll look at priority two, which is about understanding the importance of trauma-informed approaches. And what I mean by that is that there's a huge amount of research in America, not so much in the UK, about the impact of childhood trauma and adversity on behaviour as a young person grows up into teenage and then into their adult years. And it's very clear that trauma in childhood absolutely has a consequence on behaviour as a teenager and then as a young adult. And we're doing some work around that with a number of academics and looking to pilot some work in the county with a view potentially for Nottinghamshire being a trauma-informed county in the coming year. The next slide, David, priority three is about recognising the importance of communities and partnerships to get behind the violence prevention agenda. And one of the things that we know is needed is ongoing support for small charities, third sector groups who are working effectively with young people, but perhaps need more support in terms of the training that they have, the training that they can access and afford to access and the training around the models of working with young people to create the biggest impact. We know that's a need because that sector has told us that in our assessment and we're looking at the moment on how to fund and then supply that work. We have at the bottom distributed just short of £75,000 in the last few weeks to a number of charities across the county. Who have done work throughout the Covid period, which I know has been really well received. David, if I can just take us down to the key projects, which is two slides forward, just to draw to a close. We were very keen, driven hard by the Police and Crime Commissioner. To make sure that out of the £880,000, as much of it as possible. Went into commissioning projects against our initial strategic assessment last year. And what you can see on that particular page are just some of the more expensively funded projects. That cover the breadth of, you know, from young person to adult leaving custody, that life course approach. And in there is the project I mentioned around cell intervention in the custody suite. We've done some targeted assertive youth outreach on a very, very busy. Collection of streets in Nottingham City where there's a big knife crime problem. That has almost stopped as a result of that on street intervention. We are, we've got a number of things going around domestic violence and perpetrators. And we've just launched, and I'll show you that at the end, a significant social media campaign that's really at the moment having. A lot of people looking at it. It's proved extraordinarily popular, which we're delighted with. If I could just move to that social media page slide, David, which is too forward. Thank you. Just to finish. We know that part of our challenge is creating a positive counter narrative around young people. All too often, young people are still seen as a problem. And are still seen as being a group that are responsible for, you know, for everything that's wrong. And our view is not that. We know because of the work we do with charities and projects across the city and the county. And you will have the absolutely in Brockstow, as I have in Gaddlin. There are some amazing projects working with some amazing young people. And our role within the VRU, I think, is to be aware of the pressures that some young people face and to speak up for them where that is appropriate. What we've done with this piece of work is to link in with Bilbra College. And we've produced a range of social media inputs that are available. On YouTube, Twitter, Facebook and Instagram. And these are messages that we have got from young people and with the college at Bilbra and the acting department there. Have produced together a campaign called hashtag.co.uk. It's hashtag ng.co.uk. You can see the tags on the media. And what that is really is it's trying to access young people in the, on the social platforms that they use. And get hard hitting messages out about the consequences of violence. And if they need help, which we know many of them do, to access it. And the coverage we've had on that at the moment is phenomenal. So the last slide, you know, sums it up in a slide for me and I'll finish now, Chair. I think I'm just about at the, sorry, I'm just thinking a few minutes over what I'd allowed myself. Is that reducing violence is assured endeavour. And the VRU seeks to add only value to the efforts of the CSP, which a number of us are involved in. And it has that privileged position of being able to do it at an entire county level. So we reach into the city, we reach into the county and the southern districts and boroughs. And the evidence based on the statistics so far, it's our first year has been, has been a success. And hopefully, when the CSR is announced later in the year. Then we hopefully will get three years of funding and then we can, we can make even more advancements and support. The good work of the police and the other partnerships. So I'll come forward there, Chair, if that's okay. And very happy to take questions from yourselves or answer questions afterwards. Thank you.
David, thank you. I don't want to stop you at all. Personally, I'm quite amazed. We were all saying a few years ago, what are we going to do about this? And you've got on and done something. And I know your funding has been in doubt at times and.
Yes.
You must let us know of any way that we can reinforce the value of what you're doing. So thank you. Can we make those slides available to all councillors at some point, David? Gal, maybe. We could send them round if you can get a copy of them.
Certainly, Chair. And I'm very happy because I think, I think it's important if, you know, if at any point. You know, the council through Ruth and David and Marie, all of which I, you know, I do work regularly with. You wanted to hold a special meeting or briefing for any interest of councillors that want to come and. You know, join the discussion and develop the understanding. I'd be more than willing one evening to come and do that.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. 10% reduction. You should be very, very proud of that. A couple of councillors have indicated to speak. Hannah?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm really, really pleased to hear about this work, good work that's been done. It's great to see the results of the early stages of the interventions that you've been given so far. And I would hope that you managed to secure more funding for this because I think it's really important work. I'm really also very pleased to see that the, one of the key priorities is around trauma informed interventions with people. I think we really underestimate the impact of the whole host of causes of trauma. That children can experience and then going into young adulthood and the way that impacts on their behaviour and life chances. And I do understand that a lot of the evidence base is from studies in America and interventions that have been given in America. But the, some of the videos that I've watched online and the studies that I've read. The evidence is very compelling around the effectiveness of dealing with the impact of trauma in people's lives. And dealing with it properly can actually have life changing, lifelong effects that benefit not just that individual. The communities that they live in, in the families that they, and the relationships that they have. So I'm really pleased to see that this is a key priority for the Violence Reduction Unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, councillor McCrae?
Yeah, hi there. Obviously brilliant work, very, very well presented. Thank you for that. I've just got one concern and the hashtag page is brilliant when it works. At the minute, and I've raised this with them on Facebook and I was, obviously I'll raise it with you and hopefully someone can get back and get it sorted. On Virgin Media, they have a thing called WebSafe. Obviously, a lot of parents use that because they want, you know, protect the kids from seeing certain things on the internet. But when you actually go on to the hashtag, and I don't know if any of the councillors sitting here are actually on Virgin Media and they want to try it. If you go to hashtag ng.co.uk, people using Virgin Media, and I'm not saying everybody, but I know it does it on mine. And if I turn my wifi off, it works. It comes up saying, sorry, WebSafe has blocked this site. This site has been blocked by WebSafe. It's listed as having content that's inappropriate for children. Involving either pornography, hate crime, drugs, violence, hacking, self harm or suicide, which I could understand all them things being blocked. But obviously we want this website to get to the youngsters. And it just concerns me a little bit that whether you need to have work with Virgin Media and let them know what you are doing. Because if there's people that, you know, kids might want to go on there and they can't access it, it's being blocked. It's not your guys' fault. The website works, the website's brilliant. But Virgin Media, for some reason, there's something flagging up on the website that's blocking them.
No, that's a really astute observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm on Virgin Media myself. When I finish this, I will try it. But no, thank you. I'll get somebody to look at that. And if there is a representation we can make, Richard, I'll seek to do that.
No, my pleasure. Thank you very much.
That's really helpful.
Good luck in getting in touch with Virgin Media.
I know from personal experience, Chair.
Well, thank you. That was, that was brilliant, informative and uplifting as well, I think. So thank you for that, David. Thank you for coming along. Hopefully at some time in the future, we'll, you'll come and talk to us again. But we can't leave it to you to seek, to secure your funding. I think this committee needs at some point to, to make some representations to government about it. So David, can we, can we consider sending a letter? Can you put one together at all to the appropriate minister? That we can try and reinforce the good work that is being done. Lovely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Very grateful. Thank you for the time to speak to you.
So I'll move on now to item seven. Right, I'm reading the recommendation. The committee is asked to note appendices one and two. To consider the investment options given in appendix three and to recommend to finance and resources committee accordingly. I will make a recommendation that it is therefore recommended that a budget is set out of £140,000. To install the installation of a high quality space to change unit plus unisex toilet facility. Adjacent to the former explore learning unit in Beeston. Reflecting its location immediately adjacent to the bus tram interchange. It is suggested that this is largely funded by S106 ITBS. And then a shortfall via a new general fund capital allocation. A formal tendering exercise will be required. That's a recommendation on page 17. So would anybody like to introduce the report at all? Hello, David. Please take the floor. You need to unmute, I think. John? No, we've got visual but no sound, John.
Right, can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
You can. Right, okay, thank you. I can't promise my introduction will be brilliant and uplifting. I think you quoted the last, the last one. Public toilets rarely, rarely meet that description. Basically, I hope most of the report is fairly self explanatory. So it's an explanation of the facilities that we currently have and how they're organised. It's a historic exercise of looking at how they were used from which. Members will see that the toilets that were mostly used were the former ones at the Beeston Bus Station and also those at Eastwood. There is a larger proposal for the Eastwood area, which would include replacing the current public toilets in Eastwood. So therefore, that's why the focus of this report is on replacing the facilities that were lost at Beeston Bus Station. One of the things that I was asked to look at particularly was changing places toilets. Now, the issue with changing places toilets is the sheer size of them. Space to change toilet offers most of the benefits of a changing places toilet. But will fit onto the site that I've got sort of in mind. So that's the reason why I've gone for the space to change toilet. And in essence, it's obviously for members to decide whether they wish to invest money in the facilities that. Adjacent to the Beeston Bus Tram Interchange. But the recommendation, as councillor Lally has just pointed out, is to allocate £140,000. Most of which can be funded through section 106 integrated transport money because of the proximity to the Beeston Bus Tram Interchange. It would have a facility that, the main facility would be subject to radar key access. So it would hopefully be subject to less vandalism. And adjacent to it would be a standard unisex toilet, which would be available to everybody. So that's the proposal. Hopefully, the report is fairly self explanatory. I'm obviously happy to answer. Questions on any part of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. You're always uplifting. You are. Just have David, councillor Bagshaw, to speak. Are you got a minute?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Looking at this report, it says.
Councillor Bagshaw, excuse me for interrupting. Could you put your camera on, please?
Of course. Am I on?
You are excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, we do like seeing the cut of your jib.
But of course, I understand that looking at the others. Right, it says in here that. Eastwood toilets may soon be replaced. I'd like that to say soon be relocated. We are going to move them if we have this. County Council. Move that keeps promising to happen and we don't know where that is. But that will mean that our toilets will have to be relocated to about 20 yards away. We can't, we can't just say they're going to be replaced because that would be ridiculous. We can't have them up top of Eastwood where we'd like them. We're just going to have them about 20 yard away. So I'd like that to say they may be replaced and relocated. Thank you. Can I put the camera off now?
Trish, councillor Rob Thompson?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted to see that at last we're getting some public toilets back in Beeston in a relatively central location. But I was a bit horrified to learn what John has just said, that the space to change toilet would be under a lock and key. So effectively, really, all what we're putting in for £100,000 to £140,000 is one unisex toilet. Given the, is there any evidence of how often disabled toilets are used? Particularly the ones under lock and key. I mean, I would have thought that the evidence from usage would be, would be, would be better off to put in. Several toilets and preferably ladies and gents than have most of the space taken up by one toilet. Which is, I suspect is very rarely used.
Please, John. Yes. Good question.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. There is some statistics on the use of disabled facilities. The current toilets, which is located on page nine of the decision pack. Table three, I think, in appendix one. Where you basically, so if members are able to locate table three in appendix one, page nine of the decision papers. Average and the fourth column along average daily use per hour disabled toilets, number of people. Though those toilets are radar key accessed. I do fully take counts, count the councillor's points. But the issue is that we nowadays, we have to provide for people with disabilities. And clearly, if we, and I'm not for one moment suggesting the councillor saying that we don't provide for people with disabilities. But for argument's sake, if we didn't, then clearly 140,000 would go further. If we weren't to provide for, for people with disabilities. The reason for having a change, a space to change toilet with a radar key, which is widely available to a range of disabled people. The availability is quite widespread, is to try and reduce vandalism and the cost of it. And obviously, it's in nobody's interest to have a, an expensive quality facility that spends most of its time. Being repaired or locked up permanently because of, because of misuse and vandalism. So it is a difficult one to, a difficult act to pull off. But we are obliged by law to provide for people with a range of disabilities. The best way to do that for them is to have a facility with limited access to, to give them the best chance of having a facility that's working when they need it. And I do appreciate the councillor's point that from people who aren't disabled, £140,000 for one unisex, there is a lot of money. I can't, I can't argue with that point.
Can I just come back, Chair?
Please, Trish.
Yeah, I think this is a real dilemma. Yes. I'm certainly not arguing against not providing disabled toilets and certainly we have to do that. But to, but to just effectively have one toilet for everybody else. And then a huge toilet taking over. I mean. Can't we have a disabled toilet and happily have the key? But can't we have more than just one disabled toilet? Because there's a lot of women in the community who have really struggled to go into a loo. Whether gents would just walk out of it. I mean, unisex toilets are all very good for plants, but they're not very good for people.
Please, John. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, through you, Chair. The issue is that providing adequately for people with severe disabilities takes up a lot of space. And even the recommendation that I've put before you, which is the space to change facility rather than a full changing places facility. That still takes up a considerable, considerable amount of space. And the location that I'm recommending to members. It has to be near the bus tram interchange, otherwise we can't, we can't legitimately allocate section 106 money towards it. The site looks reasonably large, but it's not as big as it is because a part of it is sterilised by the tram. There, if, on the photograph that's in the report, there are two grey cabinets on the left hand side of the photograph, which the tram. which the tram has the right of access to, which means we can't build in front of them. So the space is limited and the space that's taken up by a space to change facility is significant. So it is, unfortunately, it's not possible unless committee decides not to provide a facility for space to change. As I've said in the report, there are four hierarchies of toilet. There's a standard unisex toilet. There's a standard wheelchair toilet, a space to change toilet and then a changing places toilet. Members could decide, for example, not to provide a changing places or space to change facility, but instead to provide a wheelchair facility, in which case that would probably be one wheelchair facility and two unisex toilets. But that's a decision that members can take. But I am operating on the basis that we're trying to provide for people with significant disabilities. Those with less disabilities can, of course, walk over to Tesco's, which will be a lot more easy to do as soon as the cinema construction is completed. And at Tesco's, they'll find a suite of toilets that are open for much longer hours with much greater facilities. So this is really for people with limited mobility.
Trish, Chair.
I accept this is a very difficult issue, but it's, I would like to have two unisex toilets would be better. But I accept the decisions, the recommendation.
It's very difficult. People say, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? But nothing is ever quite that simple, is it, a lot of the time? I mean, and this particular recommendation is a halfway house and it's something that we can afford at this moment in time. And sometimes that we've got the, that is within our gift because the land is ours. So yeah, it's not ideal.
It's better, though, that we have a toilet there than none at all. So on that basis-
It is a move forward, isn't it? It's a move forward. I mean, looking at the usage of the previous toilets, it's amazing that we've managed to get by without them for now. I've got a couple of other speakers. Councillor Land, can I?
Thank you. I'm a bit disappointed to hear we're having to debate about offering a good facility for people with severe disabilities, when, as has been pointed out, there are probably much better facilities for the general public in the Tesco's, just a short walk away. I'm really pleased that we are able to, whilst we can't provide the ideal solution, which would be a changing places facility for people coming to Beeston that happen to have severe disabilities and need the support to toilet themselves and maybe be cleaned up or changed afterwards. This offers a reasonable halfway house in terms of a space to change facility that would have the facilities that a wide range of people would be able to use. The issue with it being under lock and key, it's a radar key, which is readily available from Boots, eBay and many other places. And people that have healthcare needs or disabilities are very aware generally of the radar keys and will have one. I'm thinking particularly of a friend of mine whose son has got severe developmental delay. He's non-communicative, unable to control his bladder or bowel. And this, a facility like this will help her so much should she choose to come to Beeston. And we want to encourage a variety of people to come to Beeston, to use our cafes, to use our facilities, to particularly help build up the economy in this time of recession that we're going into. So I'm going to happily support this motion and yeah, brilliant idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't think that needs a response from you, John. Can I ask councillor Tideswell to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have noted that at Beeston Bus Station, average daily use per hour of male public conveniences was 129 people. Average daily use per hour of female public conveniences were 111 people per hour. I'm going to put my neck on the block and apologise to the people of Brockton or Council because I realise a lack of foresight from previous leadership. We are not able to increase the functionality of Beeston Square. But I suppose having a radar key and helping people in the central Beeston area who have gone shopping and have problems with disability, yes, brilliant, let's have a radar key to make sure that the toilet facilities are available. But unfortunately now, because of lack of foresight, we've had to downsize the toilet. So we are going to have to basically accept the reason. So I will be, I suppose, no toilet is better than none. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Colin. Councillor Hallam, Tim?
Thanks, Chair. I just, I think we're going to have to get used to the idea of unisex toilets. They make such, so much more sense in the modern context. An example, we have a new multimillion pound facility at my workplace not so long ago. And it was not considered to put unisex facilities in. And instead, there were, there's a particular place where there are two toilets, which are both fully disabled access, well, wheelchair access more specifically. And for some strange reason, somebody stuck up on one door a male sign and on the other door a female sign. One of the toilets gets used extensively and there's invariably a queue and the other one does not get used at all. Also, we need to consider that there is a very non-binary description when it comes to gender now. And so the whole argument about trans rights and whether it's acceptable for somebody that identifies as female to go into a female toilet, even if they're not biologically so, or vice versa, can easily be resolved by just saying, hey, we've all got the same, we've all got the same functions in that regard. So can we, can we all just use the same facilities, please? I mean, for goodness sake, it's not like we don't do that at home.
Thanks, Tim. I don't really want to wander down that particular avenue. I'll be here all night. Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Look, more than happy to support this. We said all along when we had to close the facilities at Beeston Bus Station. I mean, anyone who'd been in those in the years, a year or two before they were closed, knew what sort of state they were in. It was probably inevitable because we knew they were going to close sooner or later. I think that, you know, maintenance was perhaps forgotten for a while. But they were in a pretty terrible estate. They weren't at all welcoming. There was a lot of antisocial behaviour around them. There was a lot of misinformation around when we closed them. All sorts of nonsense about what would people do when they left the pub at midnight. Well, those toilets were only open during sort of shopping hours, nine till five. So they do exactly what they did leaving the pub at midnight before they were closed. So that sort of thing was just rubbish. The figures published in the table in this report are figures that we published in 2015. And we were widely criticised, Pat, by, if not by yourself, certainly by the opposition at the time, that those figures were inaccurate. So it's interesting that in this report now, we're supposed to rely on them. We're also told that Tesco wouldn't allow the general public to use their toilets and that they were for customer use only. And so it's interesting that we now say we can have these changing places toilets, which again, say that are welcome, but everybody else can use the Tesco toilets. I'm often told there are no public toilets in Beeston, which is again untrue because the report says there were toilets in the council offices and there were toilets at Broadgate. We were told when we closed that toilet at the bus station that there'd be a massive increase in antisocial behaviour and people using the street for things I won't go into. I just wonder if Mr Delaney's got any evidence as to whether that happened. The final thing I just want to say about radar keys is I accept what was said earlier on. And I think councillor Land said these keys are available on eBay. I've just looked, actually, anybody can buy one of these radar keys. You can get three for £245 on eBay. So it was just a plea. I hope when this is built that it's not abused. But if it is, I wonder if John's got any thoughts about whether we can introduce, if not a national radar key. And I accept this isn't absolutely ideal, but if there are issues of people using it who shouldn't be using it, can we perhaps introduce our own radar key, which people locally would have to subscribe to? I do completely accept that that's not, that's not perfect. And I'm not clear from this report what the opening hours of that toilet would be. I understand it's with a key and maybe it'll be open 24 hours and only service during sort of nine to five hours. But would somebody, for example, using the tram that's got a radar key be able to use this facility at midnight?
Thank you, Richard. This is quite a positive report. So I really don't want to look back and make comments on 2015 or whatever. So, John, if you could talk to us about the possible opening hours and availability? John?
Can you, yes, can you hear me now? I think I've muted myself again.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry about that, sorry about that. Yeah, councillor Jackson raised a number of points. So in terms of, he's right about Tesco's, I want to have my cake and eat it. So on the one hand, we're saying that, yes, they are private toilets over which we have no control. Tesco wouldn't allow them to be advertised for public use, but nevertheless, I'm saying we'll go and use them. So I get the, I get the contradiction there. Although the reality is that Tesco's, I don't think have ever turned anyone away from using them. And of course, once they're in the store, then the temptation to buy something from the store is much, is much greater. So I don't think they're ever realistically going to stop. Radar, it does concern me. I have to say, I was somewhat reluctantly persuaded to go for a significant upgrade to the disabled toilet because I'm seriously concerned about vandalism and damage and misuse, inappropriate activities, you'd have seen from elsewhere in the report. This already takes place in much smaller cubicles and toilets. People engage in a variety of activities that we're not wanting to encourage. It is going to be an issue. So it may well be that we end up having to have a more restrictive access, where perhaps people have to register. The only way we can really know is to try it. The only way we can really know is to open the facility, try it with a standard radar key. And obviously, if the toilet ends up being closed most of the time or incurring significant vandalism costs, then we've got to adopt a stricter access method, which could be simply, which could be within today's electronic era. There will be, there will be mechanisms whereby maybe people have cards they scan or that kind of thing in order to gain access, which of course is great in some ways, but then discourages casual visits by people from outside of the area. So it's not a, we can certainly allow regular users access, but then we'd be denying the opportunity to visitors to Beeston. So there isn't an ideal solution, but it's certainly something that we would have to consider. Because at the end of the day, a facility that's mostly available for 100 people is better than a facility that's never available for 1,000 people because it spends most of its time closed due to vandalism. Again, the control mechanisms on these are quite sophisticated. My intention to try and reduce vandalism and antisocial behaviour would be initially to only have it available during shopping hours. There'll be a time clock facility on it. I think to have it available in, certainly to have the space to change toilet available in the evening and night is more likely to encourage significant vandalism. But because of the sophistication of these units, the time can be readily adjusted. So we'll make sure that we have a mechanism that allows us to restrict the hours if we decide that that's needed. But unfortunately, I can't, there isn't a universal answer. There isn't an ideal answer, but clearly the toilets will be pointless if they spend most of their time closed due to vandalism. So if we need to restrict access and if we need to restrict hours, then clearly we'll do that.
Richard, do you want to come back on that tour? Lovely, thank you for that. Hannah, I'll let you come back quickly, please, if you would.
I'll be quick. I'm sure John's aware, but just in case. I know there's things you can do with lighting and things like that to try and discourage certain, you know, drug-taking behaviour and things like that. So yeah, I'm sure we can put a number of measures in place to try and limit those kind of activities. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I've got no more members indicating. So if I could have a second of the recommendation that I made?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that, Chair.
Thanks, Richard. Could I pass it on to Jeremy for the round?
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor David Bagshaw?
Four.
Councillor Ray Darby?
Four.
Councillor Fletcher?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Jackson?
Four.
Councillor Carey?
Four.
Councillor Land? Councillor Land?
Sorry, four.
Councillor Lally?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Roberts-Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Tideswell? Four. And councillor Hallam?
Four.
Let's carry it, Chair.
Thank you, members, and thank you to John for finding a way forward, something positive in these towns. Lovely, thank you very much. I'll move on now to animate Purple Flag Accreditation Scheme, pages 19 to 24. David, would you speak for a moment on this report?
Thank you, Chair. Am I on?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the Purple Flag Accreditation Scheme, just a bit of background, which is in the report. It's a scheme which came into being in 2004. The idea is that the evening and night time economy within certain towns and cities who get this award is recognised as, not only from a safety point of view, but it's a vibrant, a vibrant economy. It goes on from the sort of early evening to the early hours of the following morning. There's various activities, it's not just clubs and bars, it's a diverse economy as well. And those that apply and are successful in their application are awarded the Purple Flag status for a period of two years, after which they have to reapply. The council's licensing manager, John Miley, who's at the committee meeting this evening, is a national adjudicator on the scheme, so he's very knowledgeable about it. Speaking to John and looking at the scheme, we're of the mind that Brockstow, Beeston in particular, being our largest town centre, isn't large enough to warrant a Purple Flag application. Having said that, there are certain aspects potentially of the Purple Flag scheme that are seen as good practice, that could be adopted by us here in Brockstow. It's not just the council, it's partnerships with police, with the voluntary sector as well. And there are things that we could look to adopt, which will improve things in our town centres. And also, as we go forward with the cinema opening up in the future, that things will increase as an evening and night time economy in Beeston particularly. So that's the report there to members, Chair. We're looking to request a small officer working group to look at what we can adopt here in Beeston and also in the other centres in Brockstow. If there are any questions, I'm sure John Miley will happily answer them on the scheme and the detail of it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, David. I haven't made a recommendation at this moment to sort of get some feedback from members. At the minute, I've got no one showing. Would anyone like to comment on this report at all, please? Miller?
Chair, thank you very much. Just like to thank David for his presentation, but like to request that members, certain representatives from the four towns in the area be part of the Tuscan Finnish group to ensure that there is member representation throughout and that be delegated to myself to make the appointments.
Can I just ask?
Certainly possible, Chair. We can certainly do that, no problem at all.
Councillor Bagshaw, you've appeared on the screen. Do you wish to speak?
Oh, let me put myself in it. Thank you very much.
Richard, I'll pick you up in a second, yeah?
Thank you, Chair, yeah. Having been involved for NOTS Police with the Purple Flag in the city centre, the benefits of achieving it is a raised profile, improved public image, it attracts more families and older people, it lowers crime and antisocial behaviour, and it's a successful mixed-use economy long term. This accreditation scheme that recognises excellent in the management of town and city centres at night. Its aim is to raise standards and improve the quality of our towns and cities at night. This should show that more people would use centres at night if they were safer, more accessible and offered more choice. A good mix of clientele can lessen intimidation and improve perceptions. A wider range of attractions and consumers leads to longer term economic viability. And obviously, the bar and pub industry will be the mainstay of most towns and cities at night, but needs the support of other activities to provide our towns and cities with a more diverse range offering. But all in all, these industries need to be supported by good transport links and have to provide a safe environment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, David. Richard?
Yeah, thank you. Look, I support this. All I would say is let's not have mention of town centres. None of our town centres are big enough to fit the criteria of this. I live a mile or more from a town centre. Ward is a mile or more from a town centre, but I live a couple of hundred yards from a pub and I can get some disturbance, you know, in the early hours of the morning of people leaving the pub. I know neighbours sometimes complain about the noise disturbance from that pub and from other pubs in my ward as well. So let's have a borough-wide policy that just looks at best practice and tries to encourage all of our pubs and anywhere else that's open later on into the evening to just be mindful of their neighbours, mindful of possible disturbances from people leaving. There are lots of places now are open far later than they usually, midnight and well beyond actually. So let's just take out any mention of town centres, make this a borough-wide policy and try and, try and get it adopted across all of these licensed premises and other places as well.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. Words of wisdom, I think. Tim Hallam?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what councillor Jackson just said. Would fully support this. The, the work I've done, well, we've all done, on the Jobs and Economy Committee has focused very much on how our town centres, and I will say town centres, but obviously it extends to the, to the whole of the borough, can survive in the modern world. Habits change. Covid has driven a lot of people, we'll send shoppers to learn how to do it online. The, the daytime economy of our towns is going to take a lot of development. If we don't want our towns and shopping centres to die completely, then a promotion of the night time economy is absolutely vital. Promotion of increased leisure usage of our, of our centres is absolutely vital. And, and as a part of that, the marketability of that is that people want to feel safe to do so. I would be delighted to be invited to get involved in this. I think it's absolutely vital, always good for, even if we can't apply for an award, to take all the best practices from that and implement it anyway. Thank you, Chair.
That's great. I think you've summed up the whole ethos of this report, really. I have, Mila, do you want to come back? You're showing on the screen.
Chair, just in my opening to it, we looked to talk specifically about town centres as being the centre of the area, but of course, it would apply borough-wide, the standards would. But can I ask that you amend the recommendation and that the task and finish group be included, include up to five members to be involved and that be delegated to the leader of council in conjunction with other parties to sort out a suitable representation?
Yes, I would accept that amendment. I was wondering whether we should invite members to, to contact you to express an interest in being involved. We may get that, you know, sufficient from, from our own committee, but we will limit the numbers. We want the task and finish group to be quite sprightly and report back quite swiftly. So please, I invite members to contact Mila. I think at some point we should draw on the experience from all members. I mean, in sort of side discussions, some of us have had experience of street angels and such like setups and the positives and negatives of that at some points. So again, we need to find some way to feed that into committees, invite members to actually, all members, to make a comment. And I think as well, I don't want to interfere with David Gill's ability to nominate, but I think the experience of John Miley can't be ignored in this. He must be involved in and even maybe lead any task and finish group. I myself would like to be involved, as expressed. So I'd like to make a recommendation that the committee has had to note the report and approve the setting up.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, just before you do. Would it be possible to make the delegation to David Gill in consultation with the leader of the council?
I'm sure that'd be acceptable to Mila, yes. The committee has had to note the report and approve the setting of a task and finish group and include in members, but delegate the responsibility to David Gill. Yes, is that all right, or do you want to modify that?
That's good, good for me, thank you. Obviously, in consultation with the leader of the council, that would suffice, thank you.
Do I have a second of for that?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that, Chair.
Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you very much. So councillor David Bexhill?
Four.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Fletcher?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Jackson?
Four.
Councillor Carey?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Lally?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Roberts Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Tideswell?
Four.
And Councillor Hallam?
Four.
That's Kerry, Chair.
Thank you, members, and thank you for your enthusiasm for the idea as well. Moving on now to item nine, Proposed Public Spaces Protection Order. So please, over to David Gill.
Thank you, Chair. The, as members will be aware, Public Spaces Protection Order is a tool that we got from relatively recent legislation, which we can use to try and control.
Mila would like to turn off the remote.
Certain, control certain aspects of anti, specific aspects of antisocial behaviour. This committee will be well versed in the procedure now. We've, we've brought PSPOs, Public Spaces Protection Order, requests for control of alcohol, for dogs, for gating orders, to name but a few. This particular one concerns a particular nuisance out at Eastwood, which is motor vehicle nuisance on the Tinsley Road Bridge at Eastwood and gatherings of cars on there. And then what is happening, these cars are revving their engines, they are playing loud music, and they are then racing up and down the road and watching these racers are their friends from the bridge. While parking on and around the bridge isn't in itself an offence, clearly the antisocial behaviour that's emanating from that activity is causing a nuisance and that is what we want to control. As with all Public Spaces Protection Orders, we've looked at what can be done prior to introducing one. We've looked at injunctions on individuals, we've looked at parking restrictions, all sorts of things. And ultimately, having had discussions with the police, who ultimately will be enforcing this Public Spaces Protection Order, we've decided that the best course of action is to go for a Public Spaces Protection Order to prohibit these congregations, these gatherings of motor vehicles and the antisocial behaviour being caused as a result of them. So what the report is, Chair, as with the other ones that we've had, is authority from this committee to go out to consult on the making of the Public Spaces Protection Order as detailed in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, David. It was mentioned by Inspector Riley, I think, this issue. He's obviously concerned about it as well. Mila, could I ask you to?
Chair, I hope all members will support this tonight. It's clearly a major antisocial behaviour issue now. The, the number of incidences on Tinsley Road and indeed New Manly's Road has got to a stage where it requires direct action. Chair, so I hope all members will be in favour of these public protection orders.
As David Gill highlighted, this is sort of escalating our efforts to try and control this. Other, other methods have been used, but we need to move to this phase now to try and stop this nuisance, really. I've not got anyone else sort of indicating so. I'd like to make the recommendation on page 25, the committee is asked to approve the undertaking of consultation on the making of a PSPO at Tinsley Road Bridge to control nuisance from motor vehicles in accordance with the Antisocial Behaviour, Crime and Policing Act 2014. Do I have a second of that at all?
Yeah, happy to, Chair, that's, sorry, Chair, happy to second that, Chair, sorry.
Thanks, Richard. Over to you, Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor David Bexhill? Councillor Bexhill?
I've got to say, I'm for this as long as we do manage to get a police presence or a PCSO, and I'm not sure a PCSO is enough presence on there. So I'm absolutely for it, but I'm, sorry, we have a proper policeman to sort it out.
You, councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Fletcher?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Jackson?
Four.
Councillor Carey?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Lally?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Tideswell?
Definitely for that one.
Councillor Hallam?
Four.
That's Kerry, Chair, thank you.
Thanks, members, thank you, Jeremy. Can I move on now to item 10, Alcohol Controlled Public Spaces Protection Order? Again, page 33. David, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, another Public Spaces Protection Order report. As members will recall, at the last committee meeting, we consolidated six Public Spaces Protection Orders, all of which were in place to control alcohol consumption in public places around the borough. We consolidated them into one PSPO with each of the areas as a separate restricted area. At that meeting, members requested that there was an extension of the area Beeston North and to include the cemetery and part of the, what's known as the Lowes Estate, I believe. And that is what we did. We went out to consultation on expanded areas in that particular restricted area. We had just one response back, which was in favour of the extended area. And so the report this evening, Chair, is just for members to approve the change to the alcohol PSPO in the borough. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I have, Richard?
I was just going to thank David. I mean, he's covered it earlier. I'd asked for it to include the cemetery previously, it had covered all the open space in that part of Beeston North excluding the cemetery. And I don't think, none of us, clearly none of us wanted to see us almost forcing people who were going to do this to go and sit in the cemetery drinking. So I'm very happy to see that it's covered the rest of that patch. And I know, I think it's both Stephen and Barbara Raspert parts of the Lowes Estate to be covered, so I'm sure that makes perfect sense.
Lovely, thank you for that. I have no one else indicating that would like to speak. So in that case, I would like to make the recommendation on page 33, the committee is asked to approve the additional restricted areas as detailed in appendix two to the alcohol controlled PSPO in accordance with the Antisocial Behaviour, Crime and Policing Act 2014. Do I have a second of for that, please?
Yep, happy to second that, Chair.
Thank you. Over to you, Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor David Bexhill?
Four.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Fletcher?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Jackson?
Four.
Councillor Carey?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Lally?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Roberts Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Tideswell?
Definitely for that one.
And Councillor Hallam?
Four.
That's Kerry, Chair.
Thank you, members, thank you, Jeremy. Can I just mention to members that if you have issues of ASP and such like in your area, get in touch with David Gill. You know, a PSPO isn't the first line of addressing these issues. It is there as the ultimate sanction. But yes, please, members, get in touch with David Gill. Sorry, David, giving you more work. Right, now moving on now to item 11, Modern Slavery and Human Trafficking Statement, 47 to 56. I think this is not compulsory on us to have this, but it's very positive, I think, to have such a statement to lead the way in this shameful practice, really. David, would you like to introduce it?
Certainly, thank you, Chair. Yes, the modern, sadly slavery isn't a thing of the past. It's very much a thing of the present. And the Modern Slavery Act 2015 consolidates various offences relating to human trafficking and slavery. We've, there's been examples of this sort of thing within our own borough in the last few years. The Act does require that any commercial business with a turnover of more than £36 million a year publishes a slavery and human trafficking statement each financial year to say what they're doing, what processes they've got in place in order to combat this and not let themselves be victims unwittingly of contributing to modern slavery. Now, although the Act doesn't, as the Chair has mentioned, that the Act doesn't require local authorities to do this despite our turnover being above that, we at Brockstow, the decision was taken some years ago by members that we should be leading the way and in company with other or some other authorities, not all local authorities around the country, we do publish an annual Modern Slavery and Human Trafficking Statement. The statement is sort of retrospective because it looks at what we've done in the previous year. And the statement, which is shown in the appendix, there, appendix one, is the one for 2019 and 20, which we're asking for committee to approve. That will then go, be uploaded onto our website as an indication and a sign of what we're doing at Brockstow to combat it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. While this addresses our issues, I mean, what is the reporting procedure if councillors have come across this sort of behaviour? I don't know whether you know, and if so, could we let councillors know generally?
Through you, Chair, yes. I mean, quite simply, if councillors have any concerns, then please contact either myself or Maurice Hawley. There is a specific reporting procedure which we then tap into. But in the first instance, then please, any suspicions at all, and it can be anything as simple as seeing curtains drawn all the time at a property. That can be indicative of perhaps a cannabis grow or something like that, or people who are maybe confused or very reticent about saying where they are, where they live, how they've got their, things like that. So any concerns at all that members may have, please get in touch with either myself or Maurice Hawley in the first instance.
Great, thank you, David. Richard, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, Pat. I know this was something that councillor Jan Gould put through this committee when she was Chair back in 2018. And we have an annual report on that, which I suppose is what this is. I did think an annual report would give us an indication. I mean, the report in front of us tonight tells us that 444 employees of the council have been through the training. I wonder if Mr Gal could tell us if any of that has resulted in any reports being made and if anything has come of those reports. I also wonder whether there is a bit of member training that might be useful here as well. I went through some at the County Council some time ago. And I did actually report a business. I won't go into the details of it here. But it was something that came up for planning a long time ago, which made me a bit suspicious, as it was, nothing came of it. But I think it's worth members being a bit more, perhaps a bit more aware of it and aware of what to do if they have concerns.
Thanks, Richard. I think this report is actually our statement on slavery among our workforce. But yeah, I welcome your comments. We need to be aware of where we can report. So David, please, would you like to?
Through you, Chair. I'm not aware of any reports from officers actually coming to a prosecution or actually uncovering anything. I'm not aware of that. And certainly on councillor Jackson's second point, I will arrange for some member training on this particular issue to be undertaken.
Right. Thank you, David. Maurice, would you like to say a few words? Maurice Hawley?
Hello there, yes. We have had a couple of incidents which have been reported through. They haven't come from officers. They've come from elsewhere and have been reported to officers. And then officers have investigated and then they have reported through. So we do know the system is working. But I would encourage anybody, as Dave said, that if they have a gut feeling that there's something wrong at either a property or with an individual, the best thing is always to contact me or to contact Dave because it's when we miss these things, because people think, oh, it's just somebody being a little bit shy or reticent, that it's allowed to continue.
Thank you, Maurice. Richard?
Yeah, it's really whether there's any lessons we can learn. So there was an issue, and I think this related to a number of properties, but certainly one of them that caught my eye was in Chilwell West because it's part of my County Council division, which involved some sex workers who'd been trafficked. And I think that does come under the heading of modern slavery. It's not, it's a connected point, it doesn't. And it was really a question of whether, because that was in an area, although it wasn't a direct council tenancy. It was an area surrounded by council tenancies and an area that I think we'd have housing officers and other council employees around quite regularly. And also, of course, members of the public and neighbours. And it was really just some thoughts on whether we'd missed anything, whether there's any awareness raising either with our staff or even with residents, that, you know, was this obvious at the time? Should we have picked it up? I think in the end it was a police operation. You know, did we miss anything and is there anything we can learn by?
Lovely. Thank you. I'm sure, David. David, you'll pick on it.
It is difficult. And to say, did we miss something, it's clearly impossible to say. I do know, I heard a presentation from one of the specialist police officers in the Nottinghamshire force on this a few years ago. And he said he himself had gone past a house which was a cannabis grow every day for several months and not picked up the signs because they weren't obvious. It was very cleverly disguised. So it can be missed. Obviously, as Maurice has said, the more vigilant we can be, and even if something does look out of place, then so much the better. Better that we get nine reports, 99 reports that come to nothing than miss the one that is a serious one.
Lovely. Thank you. I've got no more indications at the moment. So I'd like to make the recommendation on page 47. Committee is asked to approve the modern slavery and human trafficking statement 2019-20. Do I have a second of that at all?
Yeah, happy to support that, Chair.
Thank you, Richard. Over to you, Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Chair. councillor David Bagshaw?
Four.
Councillor Derby?
Four.
Councillor Fletcher?
Four.
Councillor Gould? Councillor Jackson?
Four.
Councillor Carey?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Lally?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Roberts Thompson?
Four.
And councillor Tideswell?
Four.
And councillor Hallam?
Four.
That's carried, Chair.
Lovely. Thank you, members. Moving on to item 12. Questions and comments on noting reports. Any questions and comments on the bonfires? I'm disappointed in this. We can do very little, apparently. I think we should write to government saying we need more control over this. But anyway, members' views. Chair?
Chair?
Right, I've got councillor Roberts Thompson?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, just on the bonfires report. This is one of the things that happens when, of course, at the moment, the waste recycling centre run by Viola in Beeston takes so long. I mean, I've been a regular user there for many years. And now, I mean, you're looking at sort of at least half an hour wait in the car on the access road. And then, you know, even once you're in there, it's taking such a long time. Viola restricting it to only five cars at a time. And usually, they're really helpful workmen that will help you get rid of your stuff. Are absolutely nowhere to be seen and nobody's helping you. So it's taking twice as long now. So there'll be really, you know, people are using bonfires because actually they don't have an hour to spare to wait in the queue to go to the Beeston recycling centre. So it's sort of, these are one of the knock-on effects of the recycling centre. And it'd be good if Viola could be prompted that actually it does matter, that they're taking twice as long.
Thank you, Trish. I think a lot of representations have been made to County Council about the recycling centres and the impact that Covid has had on these. I'm hoping county councillors listening will carry those concerns back to the County Council. But I'm sure that it's been discussed. Hope so, anyway. Councillor Tideswell?
Yes, I know there's very little they can do regarding bonfires. I know I actually ran the police department. We did have a tenant who lives quite close to me. And he was having quite a few bonfires. And also, the problem was, they were quite black and toxic. And police said, yes, we would come out if there is toxic things being burnt. By the time they came out, the fire had actually already died down. But I do think it's something that does need to be highlighted. I know Brockstow actually send out a biannual paper. Maybe it's something we should highlight. And, you know, to say and also consult with the police, see what their general rule of thumb is. Because I know they were saying that if it's black and toxic, they would go and investigate. But they said otherwise, there's very little they can do. And I think we do need to be responsible when we do have bonfires. Because you have got the alternative, take it down. To recycle, actually start trying to encourage people, take it down to the recycle room and burn it in the garden. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Colin. It's obviously difficult when you've got to sit for an hour at the recycling centre in order to dispose of or recycle. Tim, you've appeared on the screen. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, thanks. I didn't have time to type. Sorry, I'm catching up on this because, as you know, I'm only a sub on this committee. So I haven't scrutinised the agenda as much as I would on a committee where I was expecting to, where to speak on it. It doesn't appear clear to me from the report exactly where the law currently stands on bonfires in this local area. And I wonder if one of the officers may, or yourself, Chair, may be willing to clarify that. Because I genuinely don't know. It's not something I encourage. It's not something I participate in myself. But if a constituent came up to me and said, I've got a problem with this bonfire, I wouldn't actually know where to start because I don't know where we stand.
Yeah, Tim, it's well worth reading the report in detail. Is Sue Hickey still with us, David?
Through you, Chair. Suzanne's, I think, in the meeting, so she'll be able to answer that theory.
Yes, it will be. Hello, Susan.
Hi.
Suzanne, good to see you. I was not going to let the meeting finish without inviting you to say something.
Thank you very much. So it's not illegal in itself to hold a bonfire. It's illegal if it causes either a statutory nuisance or it's detrimental to the amenity of the neighbourhood. So until we had the new ASB powers, it was quite difficult to deal with bonfires because we had to prove it was a statutory nuisance. And then we had to prove that it was happening more than once. And a lot of the problems that we have with bonfires is they tend to be quite intermittent. So you might get a complaint. We take the advisory approach first, of course. We advise people on alternatives to get rid of their waste properly. But then often it may be weeks or months before that particular person has another bonfire. So it can be very difficult to follow that up. But we will take action and serve abatement notices where we are satisfied it's interfering with, you know, the use or enjoyment of somebody's property. And then now we've got community protection warnings, as you can see from the report. We've actually already served, probably served seven up until the end of June, which is a warning advising people, perhaps they've had that advice already on how to dispose of their waste properly, but they're still having bonfires occasionally, but they're having a real impact on their neighbours. So obviously then we go to the next stage where we would serve a warning. And then if they don't comply with the warning, a notice. And so I think for residents, it's quite frustrating because it's quite a long process. But obviously, you know, we do try and, you know, give advice on alternative methods in the first instance to dispose of waste.
Thank you.
It's probably the other thing just to mention is commercial waste actually as well. Because we do get a lot of complaints about businesses burning. And that is the Environment Agency who enforces the disposal of trade waste correctly. So I think, again, that can be a bit frustrating for residents because often what we're doing is signposting them to the Environment Agency, and who will obviously then take action about how they're disposing of their waste. And it's not always something that we can investigate or get involved with. Though we can use community protection warnings in those circumstances, it's slightly different criteria. So, you know, it's not something that we will always deal with directly either.
Lovely. Thank you, Suzanne. Colin, have I asked you to speak yet on this item? Councillor Tideswell? Councillor Tideswell? I'm going to move on to councillor Bagshaw, if I have to speak.
Yeah, let me put my camera on. Yeah, thank you, Chair. I don't know if you're all aware, but I've been a lot more tolerant in Eastwood for well over 20 years. And when I first got an allotment here, it was quite acceptable that you could have a fire and burn your rubbish. And no problem. With the advent of people buying houses close to the allotment, one would have thought, if you buy a house close to allotment, you're going to get some smoke eventually from allotment fires. So we acceded to these and we had a once-a-month fire, which was on the 15th of the month. But during this Covid, and I still think that's right, by the way, I haven't had a problem with that. But during this Covid, I talked to environmental health at Brockstow, whose advice is to not have fires. So we have therefore put a notice up that we banned fires on both our allotments. It's caused some controversy, it's caused some nastiness, but we've stuck to our guns and done it. What we're now proposing to do, and Milan will back this up, is rather than have fires, we're going to look at putting once a month a skip onto the allotments so people can put their garden waste. And I'm talking about green waste. I'm not talking about a lot of rubbish that goes into this. We're just talking about green waste into a skip. And that will benefit all the allotmenters because even when it's raining, you can still put your stuff in there. So that's the track that we've used. But as I'm saying, I'm not totally against. If you're going to stop people having coal fires in the house, if you're going to stop people having wood fires in the house, then I might back you up. Otherwise, I'm not so sure. Thanks very much.
Thank you, David. Councillor Tideswell?
No, as I said before, I think the main concern for everybody is when people start burning toxic waste. It's not a problem, people having bonfires, but it is just, if you've got people around with breathing difficulties and things like that. So the main concern, I think we need to start trying to encourage people to recycle.
Yeah, I can't see how anybody's got the right to fill my house with smoke and ash and my garden as well at any time of the day, whether it's the 15th of the month or not. I know in my younger days, bonfires were quite regular, but somehow now it doesn't seem quite acceptable. And I think there should be almost banning of it, but still. Milan?
Chair, can I move on to serious and organised crime strategy?
Right, yes. So I've got no more indications on bonfires. So yes, I'd like to move on now to the serious and organised crime strategy. Anyone who would like to comment on those?
Chair, can I just say that there is an inextricable link between item 10 on the agenda tonight, which was modern slavery and organised crime. And as a consequence of that, we've seen a number of high-level prosecutions, particularly in the north of the borough, with activities around Eastwood, round Langley Mill and round other areas associated with that and modern slavery. So we've seen quite a, and I welcome Inspector Riley's comments tonight about CID particularly working in conjunction to prevent modern slavery and organised crime. But this appears once again to be on the increase, where we've seen large growths and larger seizures of Class A drugs, not just and larger seizures of Class A drugs, not just in those areas, but it seems to be spreading out right across the whole of the borough. And as a consequence of that, Chair, what I'd like you to think about in either for now or for future is lobbying the government. And I hope all members would support this initiative to reduce the lower limit to which companies are required to have a statement on modern slavery. Currently, it's based around £36 million turnover of a company. There are people like me who believe that if that figure was much lower, that it would be much easier for us to investigate and the CID to investigate money laundering and indeed the use of modern slavery and slavery practices. And it doesn't just tend to be about drug drugs. It's also about drug running. It's also about county lines. But it's also about violence, it's about victimisation and it's about oppression. And indeed a general control of things like we've heard tonight, shoplifting groups and gangs. And these need to be taken seriously. So Chair, my plea to you tonight is to write to the government and to the Home Secretary and indeed to the Secretary of State and ask that they consider lowering the limit or the lower limit on which a company is required to have a statement on modern slavery that can be investigated from £36 million. I believe it should actually be down to £10 million. That any firm that turns over £10 million a year should have a statement on modern slavery and should have that available to the police and CID so that it can be properly investigated.
Thank you for that, Millen. I shall consult with David Gill and we shall come back with some sort of response to that and possibly to put to committee for discussion. I don't think I've got Colin Tideswell. Would you like to speak to?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, yes, Chair, thank you very much. I'd like to concur with what councillor Milan has just said. And some of the worries in Chelmsford West a lot is, we know that there's wonderful people about, not just Chelmsford West, it's all over Brockstow. And county lines is really, really a frightening scenario. So yes, I'm certainly wanting to see the force that we can put down to sort out these serious groups of crime, especially when it comes to young children and county lines. Thank you.
Thank you for that, yes. Richard?
Yeah, a couple of things. In response to Millen's comments, I think that's perfectly sensible. I mean, it seems a bit daft, £36 million. I don't know whether £10 million is too high, but I'd be more than happy to put my name to that. If it wanted to do it, there's a letter from the three leaders outside of the committee structure. It saves us waiting three months until we can put it through a committee formally. I think that'd be quite a sensible way to do it. In reference to the paper on serious and organised crimes, I asked the question at the last committee. There's been a number of high profile police closures of grows in Brockstow and quite close to Brockstow within the city and then elsewhere. And I asked before whether these were all connected and whether it's one operation or several. I don't know what's worse, whether it's that there are a lot of people with relatively large grows singularly or whether there's one or two organisations with a lot of large grows. It might be a conversation that's better offline, but I'd be interested just to know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, I'm amazed that quite a sizeable ex public building in Eastwood was discovered to be home to a very, very serious grow. I don't know, David or Suzanne, whether you can answer that on a live feed at all?
Sorry, the chief executive want to?
Ruth, do you take?
Yeah, just to say that following the last meeting, we did talk to the police about this issue. And they told us that they couldn't give us information to share with you. So we did pursue that. The other thing that we did following your suggestion at the last meeting was share with the police a list of empty properties from our NDR register so that they could proactively look at buildings which we know are empty.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm hoping we're just being more effective in finding them. Optimistic, maybe. Right. Any?
Chair?
Yes, please.
I'm just going back there.
Yeah, David?
If I may, just what Ruth said, where we're going to have some information on premises that are empty, which was my suggestion. Have we had any results or have the police had any result from that? Because it would be interesting to know if they have taken action on to something, some good information that we could give them.
We will chase them up on that, but I think it's a little bit early yet for them to have fully explored all the list that we gave them. But we will ask them for information that we might be able to share with you.
I'm sorry, I just disagree. I don't think it's early. If we've given them a list, surely to God they can act on it. You know, they've just got to get at the station, walk to a property and find out. Like I said before, down at Eastwood, behind the fire station, there was a big grow in there. And by the way, they couldn't even find it. Now, what you say may hold, it's a bit too early for them. No, it's not too early for them. They need to get out and get it done. And I totally disagree what you said there.
Thank you for that. I'm not going to continue this discussion, really. It's always why don't they just go and do it? Not always that easy, David. Right, could I ask for any comments on performance management, review of business plan progress? No, I have no one indicating it. So that's a note to report. Thank you, members. I will move on now to just prior to work programme. How did you get in?
I wanted to make a comment on the performance management on pages 14 and 15.
Yes, please, Trish.
Yeah, there are three red markings there, which, you know, about antisocial behaviour, domestic abuse, nuisance, noise, family tensions and things. And yet we don't seem to be doing anything about it. I noticed on the future work programme, surely these, a lot of these have arisen as a result of Covid. But they are really quite serious and we don't seem to have put in place, or we're not aware of anything that has been put in place to help these families in distress. I mean, we've got loads of other projects going on, but actually in our own backyard, we've got a lot of families who are, you know, under stress. And we've got a number of programmes which can support them. And so it would be good to have a report on what are we doing about these particular issues? The red items on page 14 and 15.
What were they again, sorry?
The, I don't quite know. One, two, three, four, four down on page 14. The last one, six down. Page 15, the second one down. And page 15, the fourth one down.
Lovely, thank you, Trish.
Yeah, thanks.
Are any officers able to make a comment on that at all?
Through your chair, yeah. Some of the red markers there just relate to times taken to close some of the cases, the antisocial behaviour cases. So it's not saying that the support isn't there, it's just that some of the cases might have been more complex or whatever. It's just actually some of those are in terms of the time taken, have they been closed in less than three months? I don't know if councillor Robert Thompson was relating to the bottom one on page 15, which was the food hygiene inspections, which we had to stop doing food hygiene inspections because of the Covid-19. The one on page 14 comes O11. It is one which councillor Inspector Riley reported on in terms of the increase in antisocial behaviour, which is they put down an item, an incident for antisocial behaviour where people ring in and complain about a gathering. So that's the reason that one has gone up. And the domestic crimes, as we mentioned, the support networks are in place through the voluntary sector and through the council for those. So it's not that they're not available, but again, as Inspector Riley indicated, there was sadly an expectation that those figures would rise. So that is a little bit of background to, which I hope is helpful.
Through you, Chair, that's fine. I accept the about three months closing ones on page 15, but certainly the two on page 14. And that depends a lot of, as Mr David Gill has just said about what is included under antisocial behaviour orders. And it sounds like, from what Inspector Riley said, a huge range of issues. But certainly the last one on page 14, domestic crime has increased because of tensions created by lockdown. Now, that's desperately serious. I mean, we have in Chelmsford East now, programmes supporting children, you know, food programmes supporting desperate families. I mean, you know, we must be, we must get our act together and do something or at least be aware of what is being done to help these families. It's not enough just to say, oh, they're just being reported on. What actually are we doing? Because there's nothing in our future work programme which shows us what actually we are doing.
Ruth?
Yes, of course.
Sorry, Richard, I'll come back to you in a moment.
Yeah.
Shall I take Richard first? Sorry, Ruth.
Mine's probably a separate issue, Pat. So if Ruth wants to tidy on what Trish has asked, it'd be helpful.
Sorry, Ruth. Please, Ruth.
Yes, of course, we're doing a lot of things in relation to domestic violence. And yes, of course, we can put a report to your next meeting to let you know all about those things. Yep, very happy to write a report.
That would be great because, you know, we've got, it looks like we've got another months of lockdown and distress on families. So I particularly would find it really helpful to know what we are actually doing for some of those families in distress. That's not a problem.
Thank you, thank you both. Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Mine relates to the one that David mentioned, which is the bottom item. I mean, we all understood why inspections of, this relates to premises which we're doing, I assume we're all doing, food in-house prior to lockdown and started doing takeaway, which I think everybody wanted to encourage. And it's a good thing that they did because it kept some of us in business and we accepted. I mentioned this in June, we accepted that we weren't doing inspections and we should do everything we could to get them, you know, encourage them to carry on their business by embracing takeaway. But that is three months ago now. So I appreciate the figure in column three is about the first quarter, which is past and we're nearly at the end of the second quarter. So it's just to ask if we've started doing inspections of these sites because there is a difference in how food hygiene works between eating in-house and takeaway. And, you know, after a few months, I think we probably do need to start being, wanting to reassure us that we're making sure that they're carrying this out safely.
Ruth, I would put this back to you. Sue Hickey is also in the meeting. Do you want to take it or? Well, I'd like Sue to mention as well what she's doing at the minute. I know she's been very proactive in this field.
Yeah, sorry, am I right to go first? Is that right? Yeah.
I'm trying to promote discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, so the FSA did advise us not to go and do physical inspections, but we have been doing interventions with all of our businesses for food hygiene purposes and for Covid safe reasons. So all the businesses that changed their operating procedures, that moved away from being perhaps serving in-house or doing takeaways, doing more community feeding and things like that. We either visited or we made telephone contact and talked through procedures. We highlighted good practice and we followed up on complaints and intelligence. So every business that should have had an inspection did get some sort of intervention. And a lot of the businesses that didn't, weren't required to have an inspection, did get some contact and some advice as well. Because obviously we did want to make sure that people who were changing their procedures and people that were buying things were still being protected during that time. And we have actually started prioritising visits with our high risk premises and getting more back to normal so that things like the food hygiene ratings was up to date as possible. And that obviously, you know, the businesses are operating as they should do.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth? Would you like to add to that at all?
No, I don't need to say a lot more. The only thing I would say is that the environmental health team are really working hard at the moment because of our upsurge in Covid-19 cases, very much involved in doing contact tracing and work involved in that. So I think members may well have to accept that their usual levels of performance on food inspections may be slightly reduced at the moment because they necessarily have to prioritise their resources at this particular moment. We always hope that they may catch up, but it's a particularly busy and difficult time at the moment for environmental health.
But they are using previous statistics to actually intervene and make interventions in food safety where there have been previous minor issues or minor infringements. So they're very much prioritising their workloads within the department, but doing their absolute utmost to ensure the safety of the residents of this borough and that they can be competent in the food businesses that are in the area. Lovely. I've got, missed it now. So I've got, Colin, would you like to speak at all?
Nah, pass on that one, thank you, Pat.
Thank you. And I've got Richard, Richard McCrae.
Yeah, let me just turn my thing on. Yeah, all I was going to say is on page 12, I just wanted to make sure we can pass thanks on to the officers that's been involved with delivering the neighbourhood action plan for Stapleford. Because I know it's hard work and they've done a lot of stuff in there and the organisations are working really well. So thank you for that. And where somebody just mentioned about domestic crimes reported in the borough, the Police and Crime Commission has actually just done a report. It's called a final consultation that was just been done at the meeting the other day. And it's called improving the response to domestic violence and abuse in Nottinghamshire. So if anyone wants me to email a copy of that, I'm happy to do that. And I just thought maybe for a future meeting, if we invited one of the partner organisations who deal with stuff like that, perhaps they'd want to, you know, join us in one of these meetings and talk to people about what they're doing. There's quite a lot of those groups out there, you know, they are working very hard. They always do, way before this happened, but I can imagine they're a bit busier at the minute. But I'm sure they'd take the time to come and talk to this committee. And if any councillors have got any questions that they'd like to ask them. And they're always, you know, if anyone wants to help and support them, they're always looking for that. So yeah, I just thought that might be a nice idea. And it might help answer some of those questions people have got with domestic abuse as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Richard. Maybe you could speak with David Gill and come up with a few suggestions. That would be brilliant. Lovely, so I'll take all the note to reporters as noted. Can I move on now to work programme? Millen, is it regarding work programme?
Yes, it is, Chair. And I think we should add on the next meeting's update on Covid situation. It's missed off the work programme and it would be very remiss of us not to report to Community Safety Committee the situation regarding Covid. I don't want really to put Ruth on the spot, but I think if all members are in agreement, Chair, it would be useful for the chief executive to give us an update on the huge increase in numbers that we've seen in Brockstow and some of the steps that we're taking to mitigate against that, including a large publicity programme that takes place from Monday. We're putting out something like 300 notices to. putting out something like three hundred notices to shops and to businesses throughout the borough, warning about social distancing, the need to wash your hands and comply. But I think it would be very useful if the chief executive could give us, because the incident group met this afternoon, and whether or not we're in danger of being placed into on the government's watch list.
I know Ruth is very good at keeping members informed on these issues. Through the emails, but yeah, if Ruth would like to give us a brief update?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we have experienced, actually in common with many authorities in the country, an increase in coronavirus positive tests in Brockstow. The situation is being very closely monitored and we are having daily incident management teams, which are chaired by the Director of Public Health. In the course of those meetings, we discuss exactly where those positive cases are located. And there is discussion and reporting on contact tracing, the effectiveness of that, and control measures that are needed to try to suppress further transmission. Those measures involve officers from this council, including the environmental health section that I previously mentioned, have been very active in both contact tracing and in managing the public houses and other areas which cause concern. We are working very closely with the university as well. And there is a briefing happening for the Beeston councillors next Wednesday, at which the university will be sharing their plans to ensure that students are safely welcomed back to this area. So we are, as the leader mentioned, engaging in active publicity and communication campaigns targeted in the main areas where there are concerns. It is very likely that we will become an authority that is on the watch list. But through the active work that is going on, I'm confident that we're doing everything that we can be doing at the moment to manage the situation. And I think members can help by keeping, repeating the messages about the importance of social distancing, compliance with the regulations, washing hands. All of those things are the things that will help to keep people safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Obviously, the government have found a need to tighten up the rules as well, and I hope people get the message. I've just got a couple of councillors wishing to speak. Trish, Robert Thompson?
Chair, my issue wasn't really about the, if other councillors want to speak on the Covid issue, fine, I was going to raise a totally different issue. So perhaps I might be better.
I'll come back to you in a moment then. Yeah, I've got councillor Land, Hannah.
Thanks, Chair. I hope we'll be able to get a detailed report in time for the Health and Leisure Committee that meets next week. I'm keeping a close eye on the numbers and doing what I can to share the messages around about social distancing and remaining cautious. It is worrying, a worrying trend, but not surprising.
Thank you, Richard?
Yeah, it was just really, Ruth mentioned that there was a briefing for Beeston members from the university about students. I've got student properties in my ward and there's residents certainly in my ward and even further afield that use Beeston. And I've heard from residents who are concerned about students going back. I think it'd be useful if more members than just the Beeston members could be part of those briefings, because I think we need to be, as elected members, reassuring the public about what steps are being taken. So if somebody contacts me, they're concerned, you know, I've had someone says, I'm not going to go to Beeston, someone who had been shielding, lives in Chilwell East, I'm not going to go to St James's in Beeston, because I might meet students and they're all going to be infected. Well, no, they're not, but I'd like to be part of that discussion so we can reassure people, because we don't want to actually end up with a lot of people just afraid to go into our town centres.
Yeah, I'll make sure that the invitation is extended to all members.
Thank you, it's unfortunate that it's in the middle of a working day.
Yes, not all organisations work till midnight like we do, sadly.
I'm sure it can be recorded and posted to members on the internet.
Ruth, that would be a great idea, is it? Is that possible? A link to it that is not stopped by our firewalls from actually activating?
I'm not sure whether that particular event can be publicised more widely in public. However, I am fairly sure that there will be written material that could be circulated and I will ask the university if they can make that available, if they're not able to make a recording of the meeting available.
My understanding and my anecdotal evidence is that many students are not returning at this moment in time, possibly staying with mum and dad to do the online courses. But it would certainly give us a certain degree of confidence if, when the university were taking steps, sorry. Richard, I'll let you come back.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Sorry to keep coming back. The specific part that concerned the people I was talking to was, it's a very sensible announcement government made, which is that students are dying, if students who are here living away from home are diagnosed with coronavirus, universities are told to tell them not to go to their family home, but to stay here. I think we need to make very clear that they do stay here, but they isolate like anybody else with coronavirus would do, because what I think the message that people are getting erroneously is that students will stay in their student homes, but carry on normal life rather than going home. And that's not the case. But if there can be some specific reassurance around that from the university, that can just reassure residents, because, you know, that sound, I can understand how people get the wrong end of the stick on that one, and it sounds quite frightening if you're concerned.
Yeah, I understand.
It would be, because something, good if we could draw some points from what the university are saying and then put that around to all members, certainly. Some reassurance that there is control measures being tried to be put in place. Lovely, thank you. Back to the work programmes, we've got 12th of November, update on Covid and update on domestic violence and the issues that we are facing with it. I've been asked if we could add to the 26th of January meeting, enforcement policy review. Apparently, that's due at the minute. David?
Could I just suggest here as well that the air quality action plan is transferred to the Environment and Climate Change Committee? I think it's better on that particular committee, the 26th of January one.
Lovely, if that's okay with members and Trish?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, on the 26th of January, we have the report there, the car parking and your report. Now, this is very late in the evening, but in Edinburgh and Chilwell East, the most important issue that everybody is constantly talking about is actual residential car parking. I know this will be about the car parks which are owned by the council, but is there any way that we can at least address the issue of residential parking? I know technically it's a county council, some of it's a county council issue, but the point is, people see us as being responsible for this, for car parking, and you yourself would have it in Beeston Islands as well. I mean, car parking, residential parking, we need to have some sort of, some sort of mechanism to at least address it. And, I mean, it just prompted my eye when I saw.
It's a nightmare issue that I'm not very willing to take on. County councillors lose sleep over this all the time. And it is actually their responsibility. And residents do feed back to them quite regularly.
But we get the blame for it.
Ruth, would you like to say something to that?
Well, you're quite right, councillor Robert Thompson said it is a county council responsibility. We could ask the county council to come and do a presentation to your committee and see if that's helpful to you.
Well, Ruth, if you could investigate that for us, that would be good and see if we can fit it onto an agenda at some point.
That would be lovely. It doesn't have to be next week, but, you know, within the next 12 months.
Yeah, yes, I'm always trying to be conscious of the limited time that officers do have. And we should have that in our mind all the time, okay, when looking at work programmes. Can I, at this point, Barbara Carr was unable to come tonight, she sent her apologies and Tim has substituted for her. She made a few comments within an email. I wonder whether David Gell could just speak to those comments? I think we've addressed some of them tonight. I promised her that I would bring this up at the meeting, see if there was anything she needed to pursue further.
Certainly, Chair, some of the comments that Barbara Carr, councillor Barbara Carr made, one was the effects of the Covid pandemic on crime and antisocial behaviour. I think Inspector Riley called those quite comprehensively. Another suggestion she had was a good neighbour card, which was a card which people use to put through the letterbox of a neighbour who may be causing a disturbance or a nuisance, just advising them that they are doing just sort of a low-key first response, which isn't face-to-face. I think it's been trialled by some of the housing associations. I've suggested, I put that suggestion to the head of housing, it's something that potentially could be used in housing for her to look into. One of the other things that councillor Carr wanted to do was to accentuate the message of being a good neighbour during these difficult times. I've spoken to the communications team and they are already, have already got that on the agenda and will be looking into that particular point. I think that was most of the things that councillor Carr raised.
Something about the noise app that.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you, yes, there's two more things. There was the noise app, which was something that was raised in this committee a couple of meetings ago. We have investigated that. We're just looking at the technical issues involved in getting, finalising, getting use of that across housing, where I understand it is used at the moment, and across into environmental health. And the other thing, the final thing, was the notification of, or more communication again, on flight being on the fines and penalties which can be involved in that particular area. That's something that I've flagged up with the Director of Environment and the Comms team as well, so they've been taken care of. Thank you, Chair.
Lovely, thank you, David. Right, I'll make a recommendation on the work programme, the committees have to consider the work programme and resolve accordingly. Do we have to take a vote on that, Jeremy? Do you want to give me advice?
Yes, please, Chair.
Yes. Can I pass over to you?
Thank you very much. So.
Sorry, I didn't get a second for it. Can I ask?
That's what I was waiting for, I picked a second, that.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you, Chair. So councillor Baxill?
Four.
Councillor Derby? Councillor Derby? I'll come back to councillor Derby. Councillor Fletcher?
Four.
Councillor Gould? Councillor Jackson?
Four.
Councillor Carey?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Lally?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Roberts Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Tideswell? Councillor Hallam?
Four.
Come back to councillor Derby?
Has he been in this meeting, Jeremy?
Yes, he has.
Yes, he has, yeah. Maybe I too, we've lost him.
We'll take that as carriage, yeah.
Lovely, thank you. Thank you, members, for a positive meeting. And thank you to all the council workers who facilitated this meeting and have attended this meeting, and thank you for the continued hard work you do. Good night. Sorry, yeah, what's her?
Well done, Pat. Goodnight, everybody.
Thanks, goodnight.